We'll call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council meeting, legislative meeting for 2024-7. This is December 3, 2024. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father.
You art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. And give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Come as kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
Approved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Consent agenda has been approved. At this time, we have five proclamations to read. The first proclamation is to recognize the Parkside High School Boys Soccer Team as a 2A state finalist. If we can get them in, Councilman Josh Hastings is going to be reading the proclamations.
Parkside Boys Soccer, you come on back here. Woo! There we go.
If anybody wants to take pictures, they can come up here. They're not disturbing you.
Thank you.
Sir thought twice before shaking your head.
Come on back. We've got a wide angle lens.
You can point him that way to his face.
Just back so you're up against.
Oh, yeah, over there. Try to double up. Hey, Josh, can you try to bring the podium forward a little bit? Maybe that'll help. So they can double up, maybe get two rows back there. If you guys are here, just go over there, and that way you'll be on camera.
Yeah, you're welcome to come behind me if that's helpful. Yeah.
Shift left.
Keep going.
All right, while we're adjusting, I'll start off. Thank you all for being here today. It's with great pleasure that the members of the county council extend this certificate of recognition of the Parkside High School Boys Soccer Team for being a 2A state finalist. We really appreciate all that you've done. I know it's a heck of achievement, so we have that signed here. We congratulate you on your accomplishments, done this third day of December, and then signed by the entire county council. I know this was not an easy feat in general, so I'd like to invite anybody who wants to come up and say a few words. Coaches, you guys want to come?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to kind of touch on what the boys did this season, and we've said it many times that it's hard to kind of commit three months after you go to school every day, and some of them are, you know, starting jobs and other things in life. But these boys, from when we first started in August 9th all the way to November 15th, committed everything they had every single day. You know, they listened to the coaches, and they just kind of put everything, all the pieces together, teamwork, effort, just relentless effort to get better at the sport, to get better as a team, to become a family. And, you know, when you get in high school sports, it's more about being a team than skill, and I think that's kind of what pushed us all the way through. I mean, we were very skilled, and, you know, we worked on our skill every single day, but pushing together as a team and a family is really kind of what got us all the way to the end. And I couldn't be more proud of the boys standing up here and the ones that aren't here today. But, you know, it's just a testament of to the hard work that it gave every single day at practice, so extremely proud of you guys.
You guys want to come around? We'll take a quick picture. Come up closer to the podium.
I'd say just try to form two rows, guys, where you are.
All right. The next, I gotta say, my home, I'm a proud Mardella Warrior, so can we bring up here the Mardella High School Girls Soccer Team? There you go. How you doing? Good to see you. Come on up. Very good.
Wasn't expecting all this. Come on, PK.
All right. So it is with great pleasure that the members of the Wycomico County extend this certificate of recognition to the James-- oh, strike that and reverse it. Did they just walk off with that?
You may-- did--
Gosh.
It's on the agenda. Do you want the--
Yeah, let's take that agenda one. You could pretend like you have one here.
They may have it now.
Friendly competition. All right, let's try that again. It is-- Here we go. Well, we're just gonna say, okay, this is a proclamation to recognize the Mardella High School Girls Soccer Team as a 1A state finalist. I know this is a heck of accomplishment. This is one of many. I'm proud to say that I know especially, well, all the folks up here, I guess, including Cory. But, oh, say Cory. Oh, there we go. Boys, I tell ya. Thank you. Yes. But I have to say, you know, I've actually graduated the year. Cory graduated the year before me. We've got a really tight group of folks there in Mardella. My brother teaches there. I'm really proud to have come from that area, and I know this is one of many accomplishments. So with that, we congratulate you with a certificate done this third day of December, signed by all the members of the county council, and I'd like to invite you guys to say a words, a couple words.
Yeah, I was very-- I am not prepared for this. So sorry we couldn't have the girls up here with you guys with just school, sports, things like that. They just could not make it today. But we are honored with this. This was a-- I'm sure everyone here, this is the first time that Mardella, from a soccer standpoint, has ever gotten this far, boys or girls. So it's a testament to the kids, administration, community, that we had that was-- it was actually inspiring toward the end. So our outcome wasn't what we wanted. Everybody wants to come home with a trophy, but we did. That's true. That's true. But again, I was talking to Ed, and I've talked to a lot of people, the experiences that these kids have, the love of soccer. I was just talking to Maddie's dad, who went through our program, and she still continues to play. I think that's a true testament to what we have, to the love of the game. So thank you, you guys. I really don't know what else to say. Cory, you want to share your thoughts?
You get it.
All right. Ed said I had to keep it under two minutes, so he's next. So thank you, you guys. Thank you so much. Absolutely. Come on, you're all with it. I want to get-- you want the pretty part of the picture. Come on. We got the middle. They're good. All right. If we look right here--
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And of course, we can't say that enough. We didn't mention it here, but obviously the parents are a huge part of this, and it's a great community for all of these teams. It takes a lot to win. So our next one is a certificate of recognition to the James M. Bennett High School Girls Soccer Team for winning the Bayside Championship. And we, of course, this is another great-- another-- that is quite a feat. That is pretty amazing. So we have that. Full recognition done this third day of December, signed all members of the county council, and we'd like to invite you all to say a few words.
Thank you. We really appreciate the invite. My name's Coach O'Leary. I've been coaching at Bennett for well over 10 years now, and I'd just like to thank Dr. Savage for the opportunity to keep coaching. This is our third Bayside in a row with our student athletes, and since COVID, we really have put in a lot of effort to try and keep these kids on the field because COVID hurt us both physically and psychologically, and it's been a long trip back. And for us, it's been winning season after winning season. And it's much-- we are a community. It goes much deeper than that, particularly for me, because my daughter now coaches with me. She's a James M. Bennett graduate. My daughter's a James M. Bennett graduate, and she now works in the school system as a principal, and we're just proud to give something back to the Board of Ed and to our kids because without our kids, we're nothing. And yet again, this year, we absolutely overachieved, and I thank you for the opportunity to come and receive this certificate on behalf of our student athletes because the work they have put in is incredible, and I'm glad we're back to pre-COVID and working hard and believing in each other and let your work ethic take it. Wherever it may be, whether it's on the athletic field or in universities, we're back. So thank you very much.
That's one heck of an Eastern Shore accent you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next we have--
Proclamation.
This is a certificate of recognition of the James M. Bennett High School Boys Soccer Team for winning the Bayside Championship. And so we invite--
It was game change.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thanks for having me.
And thank you for the great-- I know it's quite an effort. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I'd love to. Just a couple of quick thank yous. I just want to say, first of all, that the state of Shore Soccer is great, that it's great to see the girls from Mardella, the girls from Queen Anne's won the state championship, and it seems like there's a state final in almost every class. So I'm really happy to see the state of Shore Soccer is doing extremely well. I want to thank Dr. Savage. It's no accident that the boys and girls are winning Baysides every year. She's a tremendous supporter of the team. I also want-- since we're at the county, Superintendent Stoffer often says that it is our athletic fields that are often what's presented to the people that come visit the shore because they're coming to playoff games, and what they see is our athletic facilities. And there's really just one man that's responsible for us having the best facilities in the state, and that man is Jesse Driver. He's probably out there cutting the grass right here, right now, so yeah. So I just want to make sure that we keep our facilities the best in the state, and thank you so much for having us. Appreciate it.
And then do we have Logan Newton? Here. Come on up. All right, it is with great pleasure that the members of the county council extend this certificate of recognition to Logan Newton of Parkside High School for winning the Bayside Championship for cross-country. We congratulate you on your accomplishments, done this third day of December, 2024. Logan, would you like to say a few words?
I'd just like to say thank you, and thank you to my coaches who allowed me and helped me get to where I am today, and I hope to be back here next year and win another Bayside, if more hopefully. And thank you guys very much. I appreciate it.
And we just want to thank Logan. Ever since she was a freshman, she's just been a dynamic athlete and a dynamic student in the classroom. And cross-country is a very individual sport as well as a team sport, and she's just been both of those things, an individual athletic just champion and then a team champion as well. So we're really thankful that she joined our team, and as our proud Principal Briggs said, it's only running. So if anybody wants to ever come out and run with us, come on.
Would you all like to take a picture?
Sure. Yes.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first order of business this evening is the election of officers pursuant to Charter Section 303, which states, "At its first meeting in December of each year, the council shall elect from among its members by a vote of the majority of the total number of council members established by this charter, a president and a vice president. The president, or in his absence, the vice president, shall establish the agenda and preside at all meetings. On all questions before the council, the president and vice president shall have and may exercise the vote to which each is entitled as a council member." So tonight is the election of a president and a vice president. We'll start with the nominations for president. Are there any nominations for president?
As a matter of fact, president, I'd like to nominate John Cannon.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of John Cannon as president, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Congratulations, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Would you like to call for the nominations of vice president?
Certainly, thank you. Next is the nominations for vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president?
I nominate Jeff Merritt.
Jeff Merritt, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, that concludes the nominations. All those in favor of Jeff Merritt for vice president of Wycomico County Council, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Congratulations. Join me in congratulating Jeff Merritt as our vice president. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Next is the-- next is resolution number 158-2024. This is to approve an application for a tax credit for a multifamily residential development property pursuant to Wycomico County Code, Section 90-7. This request was originally presented as resolution number 126-2024 on October 1st. At that time, it did not receive a favorable vote. Council has now received a request from the owner's attorney requesting council to reconsider the application because the county executive has acknowledged her willingness to modify the application timeframe requirements to permit the processing of the application. This application is now before U.S. New Business, and we have Ms. Lindsay Ryan here representing First Move Properties LLC and Star Ross LLC, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Entertained a motion of council to approve resolution 158-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Joe? Ms. Lindsay, Lindsay, come up. Thank you for being here. If you could state your name and your position for the record.
Absolutely.
And as both of you, thank you.
Yes, I am Lindsay Ryan from the firm Booth, Cropper &amp; Mariner, and I represent the Ross.
I'm Leonard Darby, pot owner of the Ross.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do you have a question?
I apologize for calling your first name, Vince Jeff--
That's okay. No offense. I've heard worse.
And last week, I requested a list of all the investors. I mean, this is probably one of the largest tax breaks that the county has ever given to anybody, and other information such as tax returns and financial statements, and we made that request, and we've never received that information, and we made the request again today.
So I apologize. I received a request earlier today, and I was out in meetings. I don't have the authority on behalf of all of the investors to release that information, and I don't see how that information is relevant to whether this project meets the criteria in Chapter 97.
We're giving one of the largest tax giveaways, tax breaks, whatever you want to call it, I think, in county history.
Absolutely.
And we've heard stories where all the investors are local, and then I've heard other stories, and I think it would be advantageous for this council to know that, and the citizens of Wycomico County to know who we're giving this tax break to.
Absolutely. So without getting into a list of every single investor, I'm not sure what you have heard, but any rumors about a multimillion or billion-dollar entity having an investment in this property are inaccurate.
I didn't say that.
No, I know. You just said outside investors, and so there are four local investors that are-- play a major role in this property and have invested and taken out personal guarantees on this project, and they are Tricia and Mark Weisler, David Harkins, Arby, and then--
Nick Simpson.
Nick Simpson.
I know you were-- Mr. Simpson was advertising for $50,000 minimum investment with 15% return earlier in this project. Is there any of those--
He may have been. I'm not aware of those details. You know, the details that I'm aware of are the requirements for the Horizon Tax Exemption, which the Ross has met the criteria of, and the fact of the investment that they have put into the community and the tax revenue that it will generate without-- with receiving this credit. At this time, right now, you know, they obtained financing for this project, kind of reliant on this Horizon Tax Credit, and their profits and losses at this time don't work without this tax credit, so it is vital to their project.
You weren't familiar with the 15% guarantee return for the investors?
No, I'm not familiar. I just came into this project for this tax credit exemption conversation.
So there's no other investors other than the ones you just mentioned, or is there other investors?
No, there are other local investors that have a less percentage interest.
You have a question? Cannon, I'd like to make a motion to table this until we achieve all this information that's been asked for.
Sir, I'm not--
There's a motion on the floor to table. All those in favor of tabling this motion, say aye.
I'll second it.
Doesn't require a second. That's fine. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Can we get-- can we get-- who are the ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
James? Shane? Who is-- who's opposed to tabling this tonight? Josh?
Aye.
Jeff? Shani? And the chair votes no, so the tabling fails, does not pass. Thank you, Joe. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of resolution 158-2024, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Records notes, four to three, resolution 158-2024 passes.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next is the submission of an appointment to the Tourism and Civic Center Commission by Mr. Bunky Loveman, Director of Administration.
All right, Mr. Loveman.
Hi, doing great. Good evening. Congratulations on your reelection as council president, and to you, council vice president.
Thank you.
So tonight, as Ms. Hurley said, we're here for an appointment to Tourism and Civic Center Commission. The commission serves as-- in an advisory capacity to Director of Department of Recreation, Parks and Tourism on topics related to both tourism and civic center.
Okay. Now, I guess, are you formally submitting that?
Yeah, yes, we're formally submitting Mrs. Jaclyn Jennings.
Before you, resolution number 159-2024. This is confirming the appointment of Ms. Jaclyn Jennings as a member of the Tourism and Civic Center Commission.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 159-2024. So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution passes.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Loveman. Thank you. Mr. Benson, good evening.
We're here for Legislative Bill 2024-10. It is here tonight for a consideration of the council. It is an act to amend Chapter 90 of the Wycomico County Code titled Tax Exemptions by repealing in its entirety Section 90-7 titled Hotel or Motel Residential Development Property Tax Credit. This is more-- better known as the Horizon Tax Credit. When this was originally enacted by the council, it had a provision in it that said that the tax credit would be reevaluated by the county council every three years, and this is the third year, and if this is adopted tonight, it would terminate any future tax credits under the Horizon program.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Entertained a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill number 2024-10.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Legislative Bill number 2024-10 will do by roll call. All those in favor, say aye, starting with Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Wynn.
Aye.
Councilman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Baker.
Aye.
Vice President Merritt.
Aye.
And chair votes aye, Legislative Bill number 2024-10 passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Benson. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county, your residence, and your concerns. All right, that concludes, seeing none. Oh, I can get out of here by 6:30.
I know. I can get back to my kid's basketball game. All right.
Thanks for coming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Monica Brooks. I'm a resident of Wycomico County, and I'm also president of Wycomico County in AACP, and I'm also, this evening, as co-founder of Concerned Citizens Against Industrial CAFOs. So I'm coming, following up on the last time I was here for the last meeting about the project on 8665 Hickory Mill Road. Now, I'm only bringing this up, it's not because the council in itself is over this project. It is through planning and zoning as well, but this is the platform through which we can put the word out to the community as well as for the county itself. And so this project on 8665 Hickory Mill Road was listed as a shed, a storage building. However, I just want to give you some background information on this particular project because it's zoned agricultural, so nobody really looked at it. However, this-- let me give you a timeline on this particular facility. Back in 2015, they were granted 1.2 million to do a manure management project in Wycomico County, and then in June 2020, they got a $1.9 million grant to do a biorefinery plant. They requested to move that project to 8665 Hickory Mill Road through MDE, but locally, through planning and zoning, they are just listed as a storage facility. I spoke to planning and zoning here, and planning and zoning said it is only supposed to be ag storage utilized only for the property itself. However, the background of this particular entity, nobody needs a $1.9 million storage. Anybody? Okay, because it's not just a storage. It's going to be used as a biorefinery. That's industrial. So we're calling for them to call-- we're asking for a moratorium on this project. We're asking for it to be halted so that it can be thoroughly investigated and seen, not just with MDE, and we're waiting for our PIA requests that they-- not just with MDE, and we're waiting for our PIA requests that they've told us now we're not going to get until the 28th of December. We requested on the 17th of November. So we're waiting on that information so we can give you more thorough information. It's very important that we don't just let everything in just because it says it's agricultural, but I think it behooves us to examine what that will do to, to the community, for the air, the water, and property values and all of that. We have high rates of asthma in those areas, and I can give you those statistics, which matter of fact, I gave you those statistics last time. The last piece that I want to, to bring up is, I did mention briefly about our police accountability board. We're still not hearing anything from them. We have requested multiple times updates on what's happening, what are they doing, you know, what's, you know, transparency, and we're not getting any response. That is absolutely unacceptable. That was put into place for the protection of the community, and it is not doing its job. Thank you.
Bless you. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Bruce Robson, excuse me, I think I forgot my name for a second. Wycomico County resident. I've been before you before regarding our efforts to, to, to address litter, garbage dumping, et cetera. It's been a while, so I thought I'd take a quick minute to update you, if that's okay. We've had cleanups every three to four weeks this past summer. We've had collaborations with two churches, an SU fraternity, Leos from the Lions Club, county councilmen, the county attorney, Mayor Taylor, and city employees have helped us. More collaborations are percolating in terms of churches and fraternities, et cetera. Once a month, we meet at the mayor's conference room to, to try and keep moving this, this project forward. Gotten great collaboration from councilman, vice president, councilman Merritt, and, and the county executive. Deputy director Mike Swayby is there almost every time, has a lot of really good input. City also is very much on board. We've had somebody from the State Highway Department there. The chamber has been very supportive, met before the Delmar City Council, also supportive. My colleague Mark Engberg met with county executive Giordano, county administrator Lufman, and other county managers, and discussed funding of county position, possibly for an anti-litter and dumping coordinator, and they're right now working up a, a job description. So it sounds, sounds like we got some headway there. Councilman Merritt has been very supportive and, and, and talks about ways he's looked into hopefully helping to, from the budget, be able to fund this position. We've talked about a county plastic bag ban to go with the city, the, the states and the city here, landfills report that it, it works, it makes a difference. And if you could see the, I saw Mr. Holloway's reaction there, and when I go out and pick up and then bush after tree after tree, I'm picking, picking bags out of it, and we're trying to make our county look good aesthetically, they're one of the worst. So I look forward to talking more, more about that, hopefully. Mr. Swayby and Jennifer Alberro, who's a recycling coordinator, and Wycomico Clean, which is our ad hoc committee, are working with the, with the college. They're going to put together a professional survey, a certified survey, to help us identify information and, and data which will hopefully help us be more efficient with, with our, with our efforts. So we're, we're working hard, appreciate your support, and I just wanted to give you a quick update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Robson.
Good evening, everyone. Stefan Feliciano, Wycomico County resident. Just two items tonight. The first one is, in one of the last meetings, Ms. Shaney Shields asked a question, I'm not sure who it was proposed to, but I took it, was what is affordable housing? She wanted to know what that was, what did that look like? And then I also heard another councilman state that we need jobs in, in the area versus housing. I think we could do both. If we can strategically plan it out, we can do both housing and marketing for jobs in, in the Wycomico area. That's the first one. And the second one is, I concur with Ms. Brooks. I have put in a request to, to the police accountability board since October for just basic information. I would like to know why the minutes are not on, on the website, the minutes for every meeting that's occurred, and there has not been anything since last year, minutes, not, has not been on there. So if you look about transparency, there is no transparency. The second thing I asked for was just basic information. The report is supposed to be coming out for the year in December. I asked, what date is that report coming out? For both those questions, they told me that I had to do a Maryland information, I had to put in a request to get Maryland Information Act. That's ridiculous. For basic information about dates when the next meeting is, what the minutes are, I don't need to be putting that in. That should have been already provided to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Jovanosa, Wycomico County. You said be nice, I'm going to try. Well, I'll do the compliment sandwich. If anybody has students, you know how this works. So firstly, thank you for getting rid of the Horizons program. Clearly, it really didn't work, and you did the right thing on that. I think, to go back to the middle part of that point of the sandwich, the fact that the attorney for the Ross literally said their project wouldn't be profitable without a tax subsidy, kind of tells you how good of a business model it is. Now, I am not an economist, but according to the free market, you should have a market that determines success and failure. If we're going to be giving away upwards of $2.5 million of our tax money to these entities, maybe we could give more money to other things that we need. It just seems a bit ridiculous, and frankly, I think, we all realize that the vote was pre-planned, discussions were made, it is what it is. But I'm glad that people got to see it, because you get to see how Santa Claus really operates, because Mr. Simpson got quite a gift tonight. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Venosa.
Before I go, just one other quick thing, in relation to what I was saying earlier, the project is also from someone who doesn't live here, and we've seen this multiple times where people come and they want to pollute our area, pollute our community, do all kinds of things, and they have no stake in here except buying up all of our ag land. So let's, you know, let's protect what we have here, and it's nothing wrong with people moving here, nothing, because I moved here. It's not about that, it's about holding people accountable, period. Thank you.
Good evening, Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County. Guys, I just have to express my disappointment in the vote on the Ross subsidy. Basically, this is corporate welfare, and at the expense of the average Joe taxpayer that y'all represent. I found it rather astonishing that the developer failed to submit their application on time as required. As much as I would love to blame this on the executive department or Pam O'Leary, it's not their fault. This is what they should have done. This was the developer's error, and it's an egregious error. I've spent the better part of my working life before retirement as a commercial real estate lender, asset manager, due diligence officer, and there is a failure to do their due diligence in this case. Simple tickler system. You submit the paperwork by this date, otherwise there's a consequence to it. Nobody's fault but theirs. And now they are relieved of that obligation, and that obligation will now be borne by the taxpayers, at a time when we are seeing a reduction in revenues, we are spending money like crazy in this county. You know, as H. Almankin said, given, given power to politicians is like giving whiskey and car keys to teenage boys, and I feel that's pretty much what's happened. I found the, their legal counsel's comments to be rather astonishing as well, as Mr. Venosa alluded to, that they don't have a comprehensive list, they can't provide that. Oh, I just got, I just became part of this and I don't know anything about who the list of investors are. That, I, I think it's very salient, especially since the taxpayers are going to be subsidizing them. I think it would also be fitting and proper that they submit a, an audited financial statement, a certified rent roll, and everything else that the taxpayers, you and me out there, who are going to be paying the price for this. We should have that information, we are entitled to that information. I would also add that, they said, she said it would not be profitable without a subsidy. Well, if they didn't have that subsidy in hand, signed, sealed, and delivered, as a real estate lender, I never would have, I never would have signed off on a loan to them to start with. You know, speculative that they were going to get, you know, the subsidy when they did not have it in hand, that's absolutely ridiculous. The, the Ross developers failed to do their job properly, their CFO should be on the street looking for a job at Walmart. That's about all I got to say. You guys have really disappointed me with this one. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Robson.
First, I'd like to, I didn't plan on speaking, I was here really to see an award given to my daughter. But I would like to say, I, I didn't think that I would start this off by saying I absolutely agree with both of you guys. See, we can, we can meet in the middle, if we can find agreements. That being said, I, I'm disappointed as well, especially given the, the four that, that passed this vote. It seems that the, the rich keep lining the richest's pockets. We all know what's going on. Moving forward, that being said, after November the 5th election and how it went, I think it's understood where the citizens of Wycomico County stand. I think we spoke loud and clear about where we wanted our government and where we want to see it standing, continue forward. Moving forward, I, I hope that we can find a common ground. You, as our government and elected, you represent us. You work for us. It's not the other way around. You need to find and exhaust every avenue possible to find a way to agree and meet in the middle. You guys have spent more energy and money over the last six months bickering, and it's, and I'm not putting the blame on the county council. It, it's gone both ways, and I've had discussions on both ends. But we've spoken as citizens, and we would like to find, we would like to see our government work hand in hand, meet in the middle, and work for us. And we've already started off on a bad foot by this tax resolution. As they've spoken, I don't think there's anybody in this room that agrees with it. So I hope, moving forward, we can, we can, you guys can work for this county. It's what you were elected to do, okay? You, the executive, all of you.
Keith Newton.
Thank you, Mr. Newton.
Paula Donalds, Wycomico County. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. When I was a young girl, my parents taught me always read the fine print. Always read the fine print. And I learned from it, and sometimes I made mistakes. I think you all made a big mistake tonight, allowing the developer to take that on.
We all didn't do that.
Well, that's true, Mr. Holloway. You know what? I will give you credit.
That's hot, Holloway, to you.
Yeah, Mr. Hot Rod Holloway, yes. And throughout my years of growing up, I read the fine print. And if I saw negative or positive on a bill that I didn't pay, I picked up the phone and I questioned it. And to this day, I could tell you, I'm debt-free from all of that. But you all let us down, gosh, I think last week or the week before. Where are we going to get $2 million to go ahead and do something with the Civic Center? Or whatever you're all trying to figure out. But I read the fine print, and I try not to let myself down. I'm sorry, not all of you, but majority of you let us down tonight.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lynn Bratton. I kind of enjoy addressing government issues now. I never really got into it until about a couple of years ago, and I started seeing some things that I didn't like. And as Ms. Donaldson just indicated, I was taught to read fine print also, and I was taught to pay my bills, and I was taught to make sure that the bottom line ended up okay in my business dealings. I've been in real estate and a school teacher. Real estate for over 40 years, I've owned over 41 individual rental houses that I bought, paid for, and they are all debt-free and/or sold. I still have 14 that I still own and operate, and I made sure that every December, my taxes were paid, no matter what. Sometimes I would borrow against my life insurance policies to make that happen, because they had a cash value, and then I could pay it back, you know, maybe in March or April. But they were always paid by December 30th, even though I was paying a little bit of interest, because I'd never got that discount by paying them in September. I do now, because I, I'm in a position now from reading fine print that I know how to do that. The second thing that I was taught, and that I've tried to teach my children, both my boy and my girl, is that no means no. You don't beg mommy, you don't pull on my skirt, you don't come back whining, you don't ask umpteen times, but could I, maybe, this is that and the other. You folks, as a committee, as a council, voted three to three, and there was one abstention, to not give this developer on this particular project that tax incentive. You voted, but he wasn't happy with that answer. So guess what? He rallied some attorneys, he rallied some, some, some support from across the bridge and elsewhere. They made some phone calls, they made some, some compromises, they offered some things, perhaps, or not, I don't know, but they pressured, and they made sure that they got their way in the end. And I'm very sad that no doesn't mean no with this council. If you voted no once, no was the answer, and that's where it should have stood. And we're seeing the same thing with the planning and zoning, and the 80, the 80-density thing, and that's another whole story. You don't get your way, you come with another angle. You do a workaround, you still get to play your ball. You can't get it in this, you know, we just recognize soccer players. What if they said, we can't get that ball in this much space? Oh, well, let's change the rule and we'll get it bigger. Or maybe we'll just get, we'll get a third try to get that goal, and it'll still count as the winning goal. You know, no means no, folks, and you don't need to be manipulated. And I too am very sad with the four to three vote, and I'm very proud of the three of you who, even though you weren't able to do a roll call vote, so we don't have it on documentation who said which, that you were able to stand up for what you thought was the right thing to do here. Thank you.
Finally, these ladies keep pushing me out of the way. No, I appreciate it. My name is Jerry Waldron. Last time I was in this room, I live in Salisbury, last time I was in this room was 25 years ago, and Phil Tillman was the president of the council. Long time. The reason I was here that night was to, actually, several times, was to see if the county would partner with us to establish something called PAC-14. And a colleague of mine from Salisbury University, where I used to work, he and I just came here, the county partnered with us, the city partners with us, the Bank of Fruitland, it's not around anymore, partnered with us, and it was really kind of cool that it happened, and I'm glad that they're, they're in existence, and I think it opens up a lot of avenues of communication for the county. That's the good part of what I'm going to say. I agree with others, I, I haven't followed this particular issue. I, I'm scratching my head tonight, because I'm thinking, did we just approve a tax break for the Ross and not give that opportunity to anybody else? So, okay, I see a few heads nodding. So then the question is, what's special about the Ross? Who's behind the Ross that was able to sway opinion? And another question, and I guess... And another question, and I guess I'm going to have a few more questions, but is if if it had failed tonight, could they come back again and again and again? Something's wrong here. Something is definitely wrong here. Now, again, I it's kind of hard. I'm not a politician. I'm not engaged in in the process, but these are just questions that have been kind of mulling around in my mind. I've watched what's going on in the city in the last last few months on the same issue, and the only and, of course, they they developers did the same thing. They're different developers. The previous mayor sold all of our properties for $400,000 total, and that's kind of astonishing. A lot of houses, you know, you you can't buy a house for that, but you can buy all property in the city. It appears that the this council is was, for some reason, backing up the former mayor in a deal that he made on the city side because he sold the property cheap. The deal was, you'll, you know, you'll do something with our property, and it and the county seems to be getting involved in that, and I'm not sure why. You have much bigger fish to fry. You have an education budget that is substantial, but 24th out of 25 in the in the state, probably going to get a mid-year cut from the state. I happen to work for the state. They already warned our agency that that's likely. So you're you're going to have less money. Now you've offered up more money, and I've never seen a council, unless there was something big in it down the line, to actually offer up less to a single project and deny it from others. So lots of questions, and I'll stop there because I'm out of time. Thank you.
My name is David James, a Wacomiko County citizen, and I'm actually not going to talk about the Ross. I do want to talk about building, though. And I have reached out to several people, and I've actually called some of you. I got a concern. It's getting colder outside. I don't know if y'all have noticed, but we've got a whole community and people falling in the river of homeless. There is buildings that are boarded up, and they're still homeless. I'm just wondering what we're going to do to try to help that problem. I mean, removing the health department somewhere? What are we doing with that building? The Sun Trust next to it is boarded up. I see over there on Church Street, if there's a building boarded up too long, the city makes them knock it down. So my question is, do we do are we really going to take care of the homeless, or are we just going to step over them on the way here because they're under the bridge? That was the first thing. Now, I'm going to be on a brighter note. For those that know me from where I started, I'm from down on the west side of this county. I'm from a place called Weetip, one down Nanticoke Road. I'm happy. I actually went down there and visited some people the other day, sat on their couch, and they turned their TV on, and there was internet. And there was like, I was like, was this Hughes Net? No, we got that outside. We got rid of that. So we actually have internet to the west side of this county, and I applaud y'all for doing that, seriously, whether or not that was with Talkie or not. My other concern would be, or not concern, the other plus before I sit down would be December the 19th, on the west side of this county, we're having the West Side Dinner down at the community center that is actually back in business. I'm encouraging all of you to please come down there. There are people down there who would like to talk to their elected officials and get to know you. I know there have been some going on for the West Side Alliance and Neighborhood Alliance, and I thank y'all for that. I just ask, as we go forward from here and all the political stuff is done with, at least for the next year or so, let's get back out there in the community. Let them know you without you trying to get their vote. Seriously, they don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. So here we are at Christmas. You don't need to pose for a picture, but there's two shelters. Okay? There's two shelters in need. There's actually an entity. I know Delegate Beecham, along with the executive and Councilman Wynn, they donated a nice amount of money over to the Christian Shelter. I encourage others to match that. Seriously, you bless others, we get blessed. Thank you. Have a great one.
Thank you, James. Good evening. Robert Taylor, county resident. I didn't come to speak about the Ross, but after watching tonight, I've got to say, you all have gone from sublime to ridiculous on this in the last couple of months. The attorney sat there, tried to make it sound, oh, it's just a bunch of local guys. Does she not know that just a few weeks after you all passed the Horizon legislation three years ago, First Move Properties, Simpson et Al. sold a 51% interest in the project, wasn't even out of the ground, for almost $5.5 million to a group from across the bay? That's the star Ross that's on your agenda. I mean, this is absurd. On top of all of that, you've essentially broken your own code. They did not make their application within the 90-day period. There's no excuse for it, and that is an absolute mandatory requirement. You can't vary a statute by resolution. You can't. It just doesn't work that way. That's simple. That's law school 101. But anyway, that's not really what I came to talk about. I'm very concerned about the proposed legislation for the sanitary district, and I'll be real kind of be quick about this. The state code, which defines sanitary districts and provides, it's quite lengthy, how they should operate. I won't go into details on it because it's just too long for a minute and a half. But what we've come up with after a year, I don't know who wrote this, but in my opinion, it violates the state code. There's a doctrine of preemption, and when you have a state law that's very specific, which this state law is, very detailed, which this state law is, that the the rule is that you can't vary that by local legislation. And I'll just give you a few examples. For example, the state law says defines the members of the commission are to be appointed by the governing body. The governing body is defined in the state law for this purpose as this council. Well, under here, you've got a provision. It's almost impossible to determine. The commission shall consist of three members, the county executive, a member of the county council, and then a third member to be appointed by them. Well, I mean, that's not the way it's supposed to work. The three members are supposed to be appointed by this council. That's just an example, real quick one. The state law also goes into quite explicit detail on the financing aspect of the sanitary district. I'm going to hand to Mr. Benson a couple of provisions on that, and I would strongly suggest that you ask Mr. Benson to look this over very carefully because I think you've got big problems ahead if you go with this. I'll be back to you later with more. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Mikel Darlene, Wacomiko County, and I don't have any prepared remarks, but just listening had a lot of things going through my head. Number one, we're coming up on three years now as Wacomiko County residents, and we have seen a lot of good and a lot of bad, both. I think that sitting in this council chamber has kind of like taught me more about the community, the people in it, their needs, and I think that there's a lot that could be done to bring people together. One of the speakers tonight mentioned about the, you know, the voice of the people speaking. And I think that it's important to realize, too, that this went both ways. We did not have a landslide. In a way that we can work on rebuilding trust is like Councilman James Wynn spoke about. I do believe that the executive branch should hold similar meetings to this with agendas in the public, with briefing books, times when we can come and we can publicly comment, be heard. I think transparency is huge, you know, for all of us. I had no idea, being a mom of five, just living in my life. I didn't know that how many things go on that you don't know about. But when you know, when they when they come into your backyard, all of a sudden, you find out real quick, and then it really matters. And if we had that transparency, I think that a lot of better things would happen. We wouldn't have people so angry at each other. We wouldn't have people so hostile. So that's number one. Mr. Wynn, you had a great idea there. I think we need to flush it out, and we need to work on it. Secondarily, we need more notice. There was a public waste meeting that my husband and I attended. We got there barely by the skin of our teeth, barely knowing about it, some stuff that I felt was really important in it, that, you know, are important to us, to the people that are worried about Comley Mill Park, you know, ever reaching fruition. And there was six people in attendance. That's it. We had the same problem with the CIP. We need more lead time. We need people to become involved because then we're going to have that buy-in, and we're going to have it where people aren't mad and people aren't angry with each other. I'm very interested in the last open work session tonight. I can't wait to hear because I feel like this is a place that we have a break in the system, a flaw. I came here in March 2023 talking about a really egregious thing that happened where I was yelled and screamed at by the county executive. There was no avenue to address this or deal with it. I'd like to see what's going to happen there. As far as positives, I met some of the best people in my life volunteering trash cleanup. It's been amazing. We love it. Our kids love it. They ask, when's the next trash cleanup? You know, when you have kids that say that, you know, things are going right in your life there. As far as plastic bags, I was with you, and I thought I would never want to get rid of them until I had to drag them out, little teeny piece by piece shredded everywhere. I suggest everybody try that one time. It changes your perspective. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Darlene. Any other comments? Seeing none. Council comments?
I'll go first.
Janie.
I know people were disappointed in the way I voted. However, and I wasn't swayed, I was torn. And when you when you sit behind this desk, it's a different story than when you sit out there. I've learned it over the years by being on the city and the county. I read all this stuff verbatim. I've had calls mostly wanting me to say no. I abstained the first time, if you remember. However, I want I'm glad we didn't we got rid of it. I'm glad we did. But originally, when I heard this building was coming up, it was for college kids. And one of the council members said it was for college kids with money. Now I understand they have college kids because I know one young lady that's going to Salisbury State lives there. They have visiting nurses. But there's such a thing as incentives, and I think personally, if I had to give an incentive, I would give incentive to someone come here for good jobs. And when you give people incentives for jobs, because I work for a company, they can stay only so many years, then they move onward as cheaper labor, preferably down south. So you have to be careful. But this gentleman, and I had a debate with someone, application. I look at an application as a piece of paper where you fill out your application, just like a job application or whatever. There was no application or guidelines from the county. And that's one reason it stirred me into this voting for. The application was was given to him in September, but she had to fill it, it was filled out, that questions were asked, and he said yes, no, or whatever. That's the process it should have been originally. There was no timeline, and and I'm I'm willing to talk to anyone that disagree with my vote because if I was sitting on the other side and I sympathize with people talking about tax break, and I'm certainly concerned about the community. I'm certain I'm concerned about homelessness. I'm concerned about the senior citizens who's has to wait six to two years, six months to two years for housing. There's a lot of issues, of course, in this county that we need to address. But this particular issue, he meant, to me, he met the criteria. It was our fault that he didn't have have a guideline or process. Someone said he could wrote a letter, or he could have made a call. I don't know if he did that or not. But however, I just think this is a vote that I felt that I should have said yes. And then I think we should got, you know, got rid of it because this is a downtown project, and I think we need to spread out and not necessarily give them the tax credit, but we need to see how we can develop the other parts of our county that's annexed to the city. And again, I'm sorry that you didn't agree with the vote. I'm sorry I had to do that, but we had to do that. I felt I had to do that. And I think some people won't agree with me, but I am concerned with the county, and I definitely won't vote for no tax increase coming budget time because I know that's what people are concerned. I I think I won't vote for I know I won't vote for a tax increase. The city has, but the county didn't. So if you live in the county, your taxes didn't go up last year, but the city, they get double taxed. So, but if anyone in this audience wants to talk to me, feel free to get my objective and what I read. I will show you what I read and interpret it. And, you know, some people interpret things different, but I read this, tried to read this. I did read it verbatim, and that's how I come to the conclusion, not because of the phone calls I received. It's what I read in this information I got.
Thanks, Janie. Any other comments? Josh?
I think a couple of things. First of all, I heard there's some questions on the police accountability board. It'd be nice if maybe Mr. Lufman, I don't know if he's listening or any of the director of administration or others, could try to get some information on that to find a to make sure that the police county ability board specifically that the minutes and that the agendas are posted online. Hopefully, somebody in the executive range can can run run forward with that. The other thing I want to say, there's talks about plastics and cleanup, and I really appreciate Mr. Robinson and Ms. Darlene and others who have been here, who are actually who are leading a lot of the the trash cleanups and pickups that we've had in the county. It made the news a couple of days ago because there's actually currently a treaty happening. There's a currently a treaty being considered right now in in South Korea. It's an international treaty on stopping the flow of plastics. But basically, every single year now, we create 400 million tons of plastic every single year. 400 million tons of plastic is created every year, and most of that's just going into the ocean or into other bodies. About nationally, we we recycle about 4.2% of it. So out of every 100 bottles of plastic water bottles, 4.2 of them are actually being recycled. Internationally, it's about 7%. So and I should also mention, plastic isn't like other things that it doesn't biodegrade. It photodegrades. It just gets into smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller pieces. So right now, floating in the air are little pieces of plastic that are going into our lungs. That's only going to get worse over time, and especially as we continue to dump more and more plastic into the environment, or in this case, we just put it into our landfill. But I say all that to stress how important the cleanup side of things are, but also, it's great that we have folks cleaning and working on that, but we also really need to stop. We need to turn off the tap of plastic that can't be broken down. We can make plastic that is that actually does biodegrade, and biodegradable plastic actually is made, but it's just not, it can't compete without a, you know, with a with a oil and natural gas industry that creates plastic as we know it. So I think all that's important to say, but more importantly, we've got to stop the flow of plastic, it's it's and the trash that comes from all that. And then last thing I'd just say, I do want to mention today's Giving Tuesday. I hope every, of course, everybody had a great Thanksgiving. We've got a lot of really incredible nonprofits on the Lower Shore. The Community Foundation of Eastern Shore today has been running Giving Tuesday, the Shore Gives More campaign. And as of like, I forget, as of mid-afternoon, they had already raised $600,000 for local nonprofits. So I just want to say kudos to all the folks who have been involved through that and to those who've been given. Please continue to support your nonprofits and other kind of folks that are out there. They're doing really good work. A lot of those are highly underfunded. Thank you.
Any other comments? Joe?
Well, needless to say, I was disappointed in the vote tonight. I don't like sitting up here criticizing my fellow council members. We had a lot of conversations before it. I think there was an injustice done to the citizens of Wacomiko County. In our last meeting, we had these conversations about the Civic Center. We also heard from the state that they're not going to be able to do the full funding that they promised, the full funding amount that they promised for Fruitland School. But the council sits here and gives away multimillion-dollar tax break. So now it goes to the county executive. And I've read And I've read this resolution. I've heard the county executive on the radio talking about signing this. And I see we have Mr. Wilber in the audience, and we have Mr. Benson at the table. And I want to read a portion of this resolution. It says, whereas pursuant to Code Section 90-7G2, after review by the finance department, this application shall be submitted for approval by the county executive and the county council. I guess what I would like to have is an explanation of just exactly what that means, or an opinion on what it means. I've never been told since I've been elected that I had to vote for something. I've been told I should, I've been told it better. I've been threatened and say, you better vote for that. Does the county executive have to approve this? And I'm not trying to put the county executive on the spot now, but it seems like right now the ball's in the court where the county executive could put a halt.
Yeah, I think there's two separate approvals. The council, its approval by a resolution, that resolution can be sent over to the executive, should be sent over to the executive, and then the executive has an independent approval or nonapproval.
So in other words, she does not have to sign it?
No, she doesn't sign resolutions.
Well.
Sorry, I appreciate you coming up, Mr. Wilber. This isn't a work session, but it is council comments.
No, it's a public comment.
You're quite, you're quite willing, if you don't mind, you're quite willing to finish that, because I appreciate you being up here. I just wanted to let the council member know this is not a work session.
Agreed, true.
But go ahead. It's okay, Mr. Wilber. Thank you.
So my recommendation would be send the resolution properly signed over to the executive. The executive will make a decision, that's an independent decision by her.
Her decision is no, it doesn't go through?
It'll be yea or nay.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that's, thank you, John, for letting that take place. Sorry about that. Sorry, Mr. Wilber, for putting you on the spot. Anyway, I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving. Now, thank everybody for coming up. But I do have a question for John. We voted, it didn't pass the first time, it passed this time. If somebody made a request to bring it back, would it, could it come back to the council a third time?
I wouldn't want to get into hypotheticals, Joe, and I would not want it to come back a third time. I understand that. It's a very.
Something like petition by maybe.
We've probably only done it once before. We had, we did it about 10 years ago with an educational, as far as appointments to people for the Board of Education, where we felt that there could have been, that it wasn't done properly the first time, or, you know, or a council member wanted to revisit it. So we did that then. But again, it's a very unusual set of circumstances. It's happened before, but I really wouldn't, would not want it to be an ongoing standard.
Yeah. So if enough pressure was put on, it could come back?
Again, I don't want to get into hypotheticals, Joe.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Jeff?
I'm sorry.
Jeff?
Can I just ask a question really quick about?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Always question really quick, sorry. I'm a little, and actually, Mr. Benson, maybe you'll be able to answer this. So I don't see how, there's no guidelines as to what the executive is supposed to do with this particular piece of legislation. When it came over with a three to three and one abstention, there was nothing for me to do. There was no place to sign, there was no instructions given that I submit anything. So typically with a resolution, the executive has no say. I have a say in legislation with a veto, but I don't have any say in this. So.
Yes, that was my question, Julie. I'm sorry.
Right. No, no, I appreciate your question, because I've had the same question for the last three or four weeks.
I understand, and I know you've expressed, you have that answer to it, because you've expressed it in emails more than once. You may not have it at the table right now, Mr. Benson.
I mean, I can address it, it's just up to you.
Go ahead and answer it.
I mean, in the original adoption, it says the county council and executive may approve. It requires both parties to approve it. The fact that the county council approved it tonight means it's halfway there. If the county executive doesn't approve it, it won't be, it won't be done. And I would note that the resolution as drafted, in this instance, has a signature line on it that I assume means that it will be sent to your office and you'll make a decision whether you want to grant it or not.
Okay, because the last one did not.
Well, the last one didn't get approved.
Right. So I guess my question would be, so if the council didn't approve it, but I signed it and said, yes, I do approve it, the last one, nothing would happen? So, but now this one is because the council approved it, and if I do or don't, that's the deciding factor?
In this instance, I mean, with all due respect.
So I have more, well, hold on one second. So I have more power, power if they approve it and then I say no, then it's a no-go. But if they say no, but I said yes, then it's still a no-go. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, it's not balanced either way, so.
Legislation as drafted required approval by both the executive and the council. And with all due respect, I contacted Mr. Wilber before the night's meeting and asked if you had an opinion as to what you were going to do. And the answer I got back was that you would make up your mind after the council voted.
I think I wanted further explanation, because I think it's a very poorly written piece of legislation, especially with the fact that in no other, no other situation do I have a say in a resolution. I have a say in legislation, but not in, or on a bill, but not in a resolution.
So shouldn't this been done as a legislative bill instead of a resolution?
It's not required as a legislative bill, it's required as a resolution. And Mr. Benson has shared the same concerns, that it is very highly unusual where there's the approval of the executive on something of this nature, but that is how it's been written into law, so that's what we're trying to guide by.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just, just know that the last resolution, that was the three to three abstention, did not have a place for my signature.
Because it was, it was going nowhere. It had already been voted down. Or it had already been, it had already been voted down with a three to three.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine. No problem.
So, Jeff? Comments?
Yeah, sure.
On a much lighter note, I do want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Appreciate all the comments, whether we agree or don't agree. This is what it's about. It's a public forum. Come and speak your mind, and that's what it's all about. I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving, a few days off, hopefully had time with friends and family. And I hope we can all enjoy a happy and healthy holiday season. Somehow or another, I think we lost a week between Thanksgiving and Christmas, because Christmas is three weeks from tomorrow. So it's creeping up on us. I want to give a shout out to Councilman Hastings, helping me with the bamboo issue. Whenever I have an agriculture or environment question, Councilman Hastings is one of my first phone calls, because he knows. He's a young man, wealth of knowledge. I want to give a shout out to Bruce Robson and Mark Engberg for steering this litter cleanup. What are we called? Garbage goons?
Garbage goons!
Yeah, that's a title that will live in infamy. But yeah, it's great to get out with people in the community and just, you know, talk and clean up the, clean up the community. And I don't know how many pounds we gathered over around Pet Boys and in that area a couple Saturdays ago, but it was quite a pile when we got done. So had the fraternity from SU with us, and that was really fun. So it is parade season. I think Delmar and Willards is Saturday, Salisbury is Sunday, so please come out and enjoy the parades. There's a lot of, a lot of cool things going on there. And I heard a little bit at the podium about finding common ground, and, you know, that's wonderful. That's a great thought. And one of the ways we, there's a couple of things we can utilize to achieve that, and a couple of ways that won't help in achieving common ground. One of the ways that will help us achieve common ground is communication. So when we, when we get information at the last minute, or the documentation is incomplete, and we have to trade emails for a week or two, that's not helpful. So communication, improving communication in both directions would be helpful. One of the ways that will definitely not help find common ground is weaponizing social media. We see it on the national level, we see it on the local level, and people are going to do what they're going to do, but if their intention is to find common ground and, you know, everybody rode the boat in the same direction, weaponizing social media, I can assure you, is not the way to do it. It never will be, it never has been, and hopefully we can, I'd like to say we're going to get away from that, but I'm a realist and it's going to keep going on. But other than that, I hope everybody has a great holiday season. I think we got one more meeting before Christmas. And, oh, shout out to Mr. Swabe for your team helping us with the litter pickup and figuring out how we're going to dispose of bamboo and all those, all those things. Thank you for your help. And Jen Albero, too, she's, she's been very helpful to our team. And that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Under President of Comments, I'd like to thank the council for having the faith in me to appoint me as president for the next four year, next year, sorry, for the next year. Not four, I guarantee you. That's not going to happen, but I appreciate that, and I will, I can do it up to your expectations, as well as the expectations of our constituents. In reference to the Ross, and we have, this has been an ongoing process for a long time, I think those who are familiar with it, but there's some in the room tonight that aren't familiar with the whole processes. It was questioned as to why did we do the Ross and then kill the whole program? Well, the program had to be either continued, or we were to sunset it within three years. And it's been going on for three years. And the Ross is the only one that actually filled out an application and made the multimillion dollar investments. No other companies have done that. So that's why the Ross was awarded this, this, this tax incentive, and no others will get it. I believe when it was originally passed three years ago, there was, you know, there was an interest, and I was one as well, that thought, well, let's create some type of incentives as a catalyst for economic development in downtown. Years later, we realized the public doesn't have an appetite for that as much, especially in the county, because, you know, arbitrarily drawn lines in the city excludes members in the county where they might want to make a $10 million investment. So we would have, we think we'll just sunset it, revisit it later. In reference to the voting, it was questioned about the voting. I think the voting, we did not do a roll call, but it was very, I think, clear to see that we had, you know, Ms. Shields, Mr. Merritt, Mr. Hastings, and me personally that voted in favor. Those are your four votes, if you're concerned about the roll call. Outside of that, I think the reason that we did this tonight, similar to what Councilwoman Shields said, we felt, or at least I felt, that the investors actually did take the required steps that were necessary. It's only two basic steps. One is to invest in a minimum of 10 million. They actually invested 30 million. And the second step was just simply to fill out an application. That's it. Tonight's decision was not to do with whether we believed in the Horizon program, whether we believed in incentives, no. It was just whether or not this individual developer had followed the proper processes. What we found out is the application may not have been delivered to the county in a timely fashion, but then you have to look at the circumstances, the extenuating circumstances that might, may or may not have caused it to be delayed. First part of that was that the county was required to establish a set of guidelines for the developers, because the developers need guidelines to know where, you know, what they are supposed to do, how they're supposed to follow that process. The second obligation on the part of the county is to create an application. What we found out is three years after that law was passed, there were no guidelines and there was no application. This developer actually took the city of Salisbury's application, whited out Salisbury, put in Wacomiko, and turned it in as such. The real issue is that the developer did not realize that he may have missed that deadline because he was getting the tax breaks. He and I had a conversation probably eight months ago, and I said, do you understand that, you know, you have to fill out your application, I don't know if you've done it or not? And the very first comment made to me was, well, I don't have to, John, I've already, I'm already getting it. And it was true. On his tax bill, he was getting the tax breaks for his, for his property. Now, it did say enterprise, but, you know, we have an enterprise zone, and it did say enterprise zone, but he didn't qualify for the enterprise zone. So he wasn't concerned with how it was coded. All he knew was he was getting it. And I was joking with James the other, the other meeting. If he hadn't gone to the great lengths to fill out his own application and turn it into the county, he may still be getting those tax breaks and may have possibly gotten them in perpetuity for the next 10 years. So the real reason here isn't to do special favors for anybody, it's to evaluate whether or not this individual made his best concerted effort to try to follow the guidelines that didn't exist, but he wanted, but he felt he was necessary to be obligated to, to follow. So that's, that's pretty much what was behind this tonight. Keep in mind, too, you say we're giving money away, we're giving the money away. Well, we're only getting $25,000 for the initial property in property taxes. And if we did not give this tax break, it could very well be, I mean, they've stated that there's concerns about, you know, the viability of the program going forward without the breaks. So think about it. I mean, what do you want to risk as a county? If we don't give the tax breaks and we say, forget it, forget what the county did, we're just not going to give you your tax incentives. So the project goes belly up. Well, what that really means to the taxpayers of Wacomiko County is that we will not receive the millions of dollars in taxes that we are going to receive now. That was it. The project's worthless, they're not bringing any investments in. If they go bankrupt, we're not bringing any money in. And this will be bringing in, it's a graduated level over 10 years, but even after 10, we'll be getting millions of dollars a year from this one project. And the idea was not to feather anybody's nest, it was simply to salvage a project that we felt they'd done their due diligence and to continue in the best efforts of the citizens of Wacomiko County to make sure that we continue receiving as much revenue as we possibly can on behalf of the citizens of Wacomiko County. So I'll be done with that. Entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work session, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions, Article Section 3-305B7 and 8 as follows, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation to protect the county's legal position, and to consult with council to obtain legal advice to preserve the attorney-client privilege. It's a motion?
It's a motion.
Second?
Second.
All's a favor?
opposed.
Legislative meeting is adjourned. The next item on the open work session is a discussion with the former Drill Academy site, and who do we have here tonight? Thank you all for coming, by the way. I haven't seen others, Kim. Hello. If I could ask you to state your name and your position, starting with my left, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Kimberly Knock, Executive Director of the Humane Society.
Tina Davis, I'm the President of the Board of Directors.
Markie Lufman, Director of Administration for County.
Paul Wilber, County Attorney.
You've been up here before, Paul?
Time or two.
I'll let you have the floor. Whoever wants to start, be my guest.
You want to run through?
Sure, I can run through this. So there's been several discussions between the Humane Society and the county executive's office about finding a new home for the Humane Society. And the property that's been looked at is where the former Drill Academy was located out by the airport. The buildings are largely gone from that site now. So the discussion, which has been put in the form of a letter of intent, was that Wacomiko County, which currently owns the land on which the existing building has been built, would receive that building, obviously, the county already owns the land, in exchange for the land where the Drill Academy was. The Drill Academy site is a much larger site. It's 13.32 acres. The county, if they elected to go ahead with this, would surplus that property and essentially sell it for a dollar to the Humane Society. And I think the Humane Society plans to do a fundraising, what, five to seven million to build a facility.
Yes.
On that site. It certainly is an ambitious and extensive building. As I understand it, it's for dealing with the animal control, but also dealing with just the health of the animals that are brought in. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right? To protect the county, the deed, if it went through the council, would contain a right of reverter in it, which would. of reverter in it, which would essentially say the Humane Society needs to do this project within five years with a possible extension for three more years, or the property's going to revert back to the county. It's essentially putting a time limit on the length of this project. Another aspect of the deed would be that there would be a first right of refusal, that if the Humane Society at some point wanted to sell the land and building, the county would have the first right of refusal to buy it, take it back. The Humane Society understands that the property would be served by well and septic. There is no sewer and water connection to that site at present. They would also continue to have an MOU with the county to deal with the animal control needs of the county. So that's, that's essentially the deal, if you will, that has been proposed and is here for discussion tonight.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else at the table first? Will you start?
I believe the last time we were here, we had discussed getting the property turned over to us and that we actually had taken a vote as a board and had requested to do a seven-year, as long as we break ground in seven years. We're not looking just for donations to build this building. We have money already set aside that we're not going to, I don't see where we're going to struggle to be able to break ground and go with this. But we are at a point now that it's six months later, and we're at a period, end of the year, where donations can be given freely, you know, because people want to get rid of money so they don't get taxed on it and whatnot. But, and we're still kind of dragging through this. At this point, I mean, we love the property, don't get me wrong, but if we're not going to be able to get the property, we need to know this, because we need to move forward. We have animals that we need to take care of. We've got extensive amount of animals this year over last year. And, I mean, we're at a point that we're making decisions that we shouldn't be having to make if we had been able to get moving forward with this. And if we have to get property from somewhere else, so be it. But we just don't want it to keep dragging out, because we're not getting, it's not getting any easier working in there every day. So I just think that at this point, we just need to decide what we're doing and get it done or don't get it done, either way. I mean, we just, I mean, we benefit the county tremendously. I mean, we're taking in animals left and right every day that we just don't have the facility to take them in anymore. So I just want some kind of resolution that we can agree to and, and get it done versus dragging it out.
And I don't think we'd have any objection to doing a seven-year with a three-year extension if the council wanted to do it, because I, I think the extension is important because as we saw a few years ago, sometimes supply chain things happen, sometimes things happen in the economy. We've all lived through the Great Recession. So I think, given the council a power to, to extend, if there's extenuating circumstances, should be a part of it, to, to help you guys as well.
Yes.
So you're thinking the cost is about $5 million, is that right?
They're estimating $5 to $7 million.
So if you had $5 million right now, we wouldn't have a problem, right? We'd be doing it.
We'd be doing it.
So I guess the only thing we really need to do, because it wasn't really, we don't really have it with a brief book outside of just the letter of intent, are there projections so that we can say, oh, yeah, in, in five years, $5 million's easy? You know, are you raising a million a year? That's really, I think, kind of like, like, we want to do everything we can to help you. We just want to know where, where it's sustainable.
We can't really start our capital fundraising until we can say this land is ours.
Right.
And this is where the building is going to go.
Well, I think that-
But at the same time, we already have a million dollars.
Which is a heck of a good start.
That's set aside to put towards it.
Sure.
I mean, it's not like we're going in broke. We, you know, we, we have money we've been putting aside for the, the purpose of the building.
I guess one of the, the only question would be, I mean, if we say, yeah, sure, let's, let's get started with this, I don't see the downside, even if the project doesn't succeed, right? Am I right? I mean, what's the worst-case scenario if they're halfway through it? I'm ask, I would ask you, Bunky and, and Mr. Wilbur, what would it, what would it be outside of maybe we'd have a building that we'd have to eventually tear back down again?
Yeah, you, you could end up theoretically with a half-finished building.
Coming back. But even when, when originally, when it was a, not a detention center, what was it?
Drill Academy.
Drill Academy. I mean, that, that building sat there for 20 years, did it?
Yep.
It sat there for 20 years, so.
Yep.
I don't see the downside to it. I don't think anybody sees the downside to it. You've got a great organization, it's run very well.
Yeah.
In, in an excellent fashion. I just, again, would get back to, you have a million, which is fantastic. How do you project over the next seven years, the funds that you'll have in order to make this successful? I mean, where would you start with that?
We actually have a member on our board who, who works with nothing but grants and bonds. That's what she does for a living. And she's actually writing up bonds and, and doing all kinds of paperwork through different organizations. Like, I, I would get online and I would search out where to, where can we get money from in order to get our goals met. And I give list after list, and, and she goes for it. She writes them all up, she does all the paperwork for it. So, I mean, we're doing good with it.
So what do we need to do from here?
James, James had a question, I guess.
I was going to say, so what do, what do we, I didn't want to cut Joe off, but what do we, what do we do from here? If we're all in consensus to do this, what's next?
There is a process for surplus, but I think with the council consensus on this, we could start those proceedings. I haven't been involved in a surplus, Paul, so.
Well, there's a code procedure that would go through to surplus land and then to dispose of it, the county does. Yeah.
But I think we could start that with a, do we need a formal vote or just the, if the consensus, I think.
Well, if there's a consensus to proceed, then the next step is to, let's get the surplus paperwork in front of the council.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
I've got a question.
Joe?
The Health Department, water and sewer. Have you talked to them? Have you had any? You, you really need to talk to them, because how many employees do you have?
About 17.
You've got 17 employees. What about the waste from the animals? What do you do with that? How do you dispose of that?
Oh, it goes through the, the sewer right now.
Sewer line.
We pay.
Yeah. Oh, so you've got water and sewer, you've got, you've got sewer now.
We have a well, and then the front of our facility is hooked up to the sewer.
So you really, I mean, no, no offense, no, no, I'm not saying anything negative about what we want to decide here. I think, looks like everybody's shaking their head, yeah. But you're going to find, that's going to be, your million dollars is going to go away pretty quick when you start talking about using a septic system for how many animals a day? 100? How many animals have you got in there, 100?
Well, are you counting cats, dogs, everything?
Yeah, yeah.
Probably about 350.
Okay. You, you really need to get on board with the Health Department really quick, because that's going to be a, it's going to be something that I think you're going to find pretty expensive.
I, I, well, I agree with Councilman Holloway, and I will help you, I can help you set up the meeting with, with the health officer. So I think it is something that you need to look at.
He's not around at the time, by the way. He's on maternity leave, so.
He's on maternity leave.
Langford, you had a comment? You could come to the podium if you want to.
Yeah.
Might be easier for you.
When we were first looking at this-
Can you state your name?
Sorry, Heather Langford, Manager Engineer for the County. When we first started looking at this property, there is, there was the intent to have the water and sewer. So there is lines in there, there's a grinder in there already, there's a station in there already. So if they do want to connect, we have that connection fairly close by. However, that will be up to them, whether they want to do the connection or if-
Close to definition of fairly close by.
So we had, we did the airport run. So it would be a loop around, around folks and, and a-
Wasn't that a denied access line?
Not along the airport road, along the actual airline down that, that back path where, where it was just strictly their wells, then, then yes, it was, that was denied access.
Whatever, whatever way you go, you, that's something you really want. If you've got 300-plus animals and, you know, it's going to be an expense.
Money associated with septic and well.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
That's all I have. I'm okay, you know. I know, I know they're up against it.
Everybody, yeah, I guess some facts, similarly of a business plan would really be helpful with projections and, and recognizing what your true costs will be, to see, you know, what you'll have in year one, two, three, and four. And part of that would be what Joe was talking about, and that would be a really big help for us before we get to the final approval. But yeah, I mean, we're just, we're just begging for a really good reason to make this happen.
What, what's going to happen with the old building?
So if this went through and the county got it, we would, the first thing we'd need to do is a feasibility study, because it is, it is an older building. And one of the things that really, if you visit, visit this facility, that really cries out why they need a new facility is see where the vet, where the veterinarian works. I mean, it is a very, very cramped space, so, but I don't know if there's an alternative use that we'll find, but that's something we would certainly study and see.
I was going to say, I didn't know if it would make sense to sell it to like a kennel club or something like that, that, you know.
We tend, the county tends to keep property that we have around the, the airport. This is a little further away.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But, yeah, maybe.
Who owns the current building now?
We own the building.
So the county doesn't own it, you own it.
The county owns the land.
Yeah, we own the land, okay.
Right.
All right, maybe you could lease it. That would be a revenue stream, possibly. All right, we got a consensus? Yes, Josh?
I just want to add, I just want to second what Mr. Holloway said. If you can hook into water and sewer, please do that, because it's nothing but headaches. I mean, the state of Maryland has been very clear that they're not trying to do any more with septic systems and well. And who knows if you're going to find a random chemical in there that ends up poisoning the dogs or something like this. You don't want anything a headache. If you can hook in, do it. But yeah, definitely.
So it is my understanding that there is already a well on the property, and the same thing with where we are now. We use the well for just cleaning the kennels, and then the front of the house, the more potable areas go through the city. But we were completely working off of a well before.
And we'll, we'll look from the county's perspective, and he's sitting right there. I'll have Adam, Adam look at this situation tomorrow, and, and Heather, and we'll see what it would look like if we ran water and/or wastewater from the airport. I, I don't know what the associated cost would be, but we can, we can figure that out.
And Adam will have the foundation in tomorrow night.
That's right.
We have a consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do have a question. So with the, would you like this surplus to be on the next agenda so I would send a request tomorrow? Or is that how, can we move it that quick? I don't know, maybe that's a question for Paul.
It's Christmas time.
Because I would like to move it, you know, quickly.
We can certainly put the push on.
Okay.
Start the process.
All right, that, that's means yes, I think.
Yeah, thank you.
So you're on the clock, Paul.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the buzzword.
Next item on the open work session is a letter of support for an athletic and event facility alcohol license. This is in conjunction with the sporting and other events at the Crown Center. We have Mr. Richard Duvall here and company. If you could just state your names and your titles, your positions, your organizations for the record. Thank you.
Jennifer Jordan, Chair of the Wycomico Board of License Commissioners.
Richard Duvall, I'm the attorney for the board.
You have the floor.
Thank you. President Cannon and members of the council, we sent a letter on October the 17th, which I'm sure you looked at. This proposal is for a new license, and it's entitled an athletic and event facility license. The entity that made the initial request of the board to look at this proposal is the Crown Center in south of, just south of Fruitland. And we had a meeting, we looked at the issues, we developed a model or a proposed legislation that was modeled after the arena license in Baltimore City. We tweaked that language for the Baltimore City license, because you're, you're almost talking apples and oranges, and tried to adapt the use to this county. The, same time we were sending this to you, we sent this to Delegate Chris Adams. He had legislative drafters put together a bill. So this is a situation that you may or may not have found yourself in previous, previously, but now you have an actual bill in front of you that's proposed for submission for the House of Delegates and the Senate for passage. What I'd like to focus on is what I think are the, some minor, minor technical issues first, and then talk about what I think, general concerns of this body, as well as my board, with respect to what I'll call a mixed-use facility, where you have minors involved in athletic and other events, and how that's going to be addressed. The technical issue essentially is, if you just bear with me, apologize. You can see on the last item that was submitted to you, which I don't have actually, thanks. If you go to the second page, you'll see-
Second page of what, Richard?
Yeah, it's the-
It's the most recent version of the bill that was drafted.
It says, "Draft receives 12/2/2024."
It's actually a copy of it, it's on your desk. Yes, we just had received that on the 2nd of December.
There we go. But just coincidentally, that came in from the legislative drafter's office yesterday. We're on the 2nd. So if you switch to the second page, what we had originally submitted to the body in Part E on the second page has the license amount fee of $1,750. We had wanted to be able to modify that as necessary by regulation, and that language was in the original submission up to Annapolis. What I was told was if they put the number in, you can't change it locally. If you want to change it, you have to get new legislation passed in Annapolis, and that's a long, drawn-out process, as you know. So that's why that number's stricken. And then you'll see the underlying language in Part F where it says at the very end, as it's going through what can be regulated by the board, it talks there about, and the annual license fee. Okay? So that streamlines that process. And I'm going to, I'm going to take that point and segue that into the issue that I think is of concern to all, and that has to do with minors and exposure to alcohol there, and/or people who are consuming alcohol. And some of you may have seen this, I have personally, I had a son in the soccer program over there about 15 years ago. Every now and then you get an adult, and we've seen it at softball games, who have a problem with the way a game's being called, let's say. So we tried with the legislative drafter to address that potential problem and to bring control to it through actual language in the statute. After we wrestled with that, we both concluded that the better way to deal with that issue is by regulation by the board. Reason being, the same reason I said before, if we have a problem and we haven't quite anticipated, through statutory language, we've got to go through this process and it'd take a year to change it. The board at the local level can go through the regulation process, an amendment to regulation. 60 days would be about the longest that that would take. It could be done quicker, but you can do it in 60 days instead of 365 days. So that's how this board would propose to address shared concerns with respect to alcohol in the same place where there's eight-year-olds playing soccer, okay, and their family members and so on. We, we left some things out. The Baltimore law allowed a use of the premise that's similar to what's being done- The Baltimore law allowed a use of the premise that's similar to what's being done at the Wycomico Civic Center. We took that language out of the front part of this statute so that we don't encroach upon, uh, I don't, business is the wrong word, but I'm just gonna say business at this, at the Civic Center. There was some other language that mirrored, um, other licenses that we already have in place in the county, specifically a theater license, um, uh, and other licenses of that type. We took that out. So what we have here is a, is a license that would allow service of alcohol at, at athletic and events facilities. Some of the events at this particular location would include dog shows, wedding receptions, banquets, that sort of thing. So it's a mixed-use facility. The other piece that I should, um, should touch on is, if you look at that, um, it actually says page three, but it's, it's the second page. It is the third page, I'm sorry. So on the third page of this document that's got the December 2nd date on it, there is a reference in there on one of the requirements. And that is that the facility have a minimal capital investment of a million dollars, not including investment in the real property.
Is that, is that an additional, for, I guess for clarity of that, it's not, it's not that the property is, is worth a million dollars?
Yeah, it's, it's excluding the value of the real estate.
So I didn't understand that. Why would you be required to invest a million dollars? This is just a license for.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it, that's why I'm bringing it up. So let me, let me profess this by saying, that's the number that was used in the Baltimore City law, okay? Um, and it's occurred to me as I'm thinking about it in preparation this evening, that may be a number, uh, that would be preclusive to other licensees being able to get into this space. Um, and I know this is just a work session, so that's a number that I think we all wanna take a look at and determine whether or not it should be lower. And, uh.
I'm not quite sure why there should be a requirement for minimum capital investment anyway. I mean, our real position is whether, you know, whether or not we're gonna grant an alcohol license and whether it's gonna be.
Well, I guess on that, I would say, Mr. Cannon, it, that is a provision that's typically, um, in licenses of this type. In this county, for example, a restaurant license has to show a minimum capital investment of 200,000. But that's a restaurant. This use is gonna be much larger. Uh, and you'll also notice in there, there's a, there's gotta be capacity for at least 500 people. So we're talking about a fairly large facility, um, in this county. But, but I, but I will candidly admit to the board, the million-dollar number is probably, may create, uh, for lack of a better term, a barrier to entry of other licensees that might wanna build something like this on the north side of town, for example.
Mr. Duvall, why don't we do the same thing with this investment as you, um, did very well in reference to the licensing fee? And make this simply by the determination of your board, because there could be a smaller venue. We don't wanna have to go through this whole process again and change this million dollars.
You mean add it, you mean add it to?
Yes.
Add it to F?
Add it to F.
Yeah. And the board would not be opposed to that.
Let me, so what, what I'll do is, I'll call the attorneys in Annapolis, see A if we can do it. And if that's the board's, if that's the county council's preference, then that's, we'll modify it in that fashion.
Would that suffice?
Yeah, I think, I think if we pass it and we find out that a million's way too much, then.
We got a problem.
Yeah. And that was our concern. I mean, our intent behind this is to, to keep the county open for business ventures of this sort. Uh, we don't, we don't wanna do anything that's going to hamper, uh, if there are other establishments that would like to operate a facility similar to what we already have. Um, our intent is to keep the business here in the county, not have it go to any of the surrounding counties, because we currently don't have an alcohol bill that suffices. I mean, we, we looked at everything that we currently have, and we don't have it. Um, and we wanna keep the business here in Wycomico County. So that's the intent behind it. So to your point, we don't wanna do anything that's going to preclude if there are additionals.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find out. And I guess the other thing I would add on this number, the point of it, and I'm, I probably am insulting your intelligence by what I'm about to say, but you gotta have some number so that you have a reasonably, um, fit facility, uh, in your county, that's not a, for lack of a better word, a dump. You gotta have some minimum number. But if we can set that by regulation, um, we'll, we'll go with, we'll.
Is that okay with everybody, with that adjustment?
Do any of the other counties around us, do they have anything like this?
There's nothing quite like this.
No.
In fact, I, you know, Baltimore City was the last place I wanted to go to, because it's such an apples and oranges comparison. There are similar, um, recreational licenses, um, that have some recreational activities, but nothing quite like a building that's gonna house sporting events, dog shows, and that sort of thing. So that's why I would answer your question.
You got a question, Joe?
Yeah, I've got a few. I guess my, you, you mentioned the alcohol and the youth and the games and the, for lack of a better word, unhappy parents. Is the Civic Center, when you put, when we did the laws, and I say we, the county did the laws for the Civic Center, do they have any restrictions about when alcohol is served out there, as far as?
I, I apologize, I can't answer that question specifically.
Okay, we do not believe they do. Christine, no?
No, they do not have restrictions.
You can come up to the table if you'd like, so they can get this on record. It's the closest venue, sort of like what this is gonna be.
The Civic Center, when they were approved, um, does not have a restriction on when events alcohol can be served, but they chose to not serve alcohol during what we would call a children's event. Examples would be like.
Disney on Ice.
Disney on Ice, Ring Me Brothers, things of that nature.
So I made a couple, made a phone call before this to someone who had kids playing out there, and he, he basically didn't say it was some, he had no opinion one way or the other. But the one thing he did say, he said, you know how hard it is to hire coaches? And I said, well, not really. He says, it's because of all the grief they get. So is there anywhere in here we could put that alcohol would not be served when there's youth sports taking place?
Well, that, that would be addressed in the regulation.
Now, who sets those regulations?
We set the regulations.
The board does.
The council would have no say over that.
The, the council itself would not, but the Board of License Commissioners would. And I can tell you that when this entity came in front of us, um, there was, uh, when their, their concept was presented to us, it was made very clear that alcohol would not be served when there were youth activities or youth events happening. So we wouldn't have that. They're, they're looking at more of the, the adult sports leagues, they're looking at corporate events, they're looking at the dog shows, that type of thing. They're not looking at when it's Saturday afternoon, rec soccer, we're gonna be serving alcohol, we're gonna be serving beer.
You say they, who are they?
I'm sorry, the, the owners of Crown Sports Center.
Who are they?
Uh, Mr. Gilkerson and, um.
Jeremy.
Jeremy Norton, yes.
And, um.
Mr. Holloway, can, on your point, uh, the memo that we wrote to the board on this, that where it gets to the regulatory aspect of it, on page two, um, you've got in writing in front of you that the regulations will prohibit consumption of alcohol in conjunction with sporting and other events involving minors. So this board's on the record.
Our board is committed to that.
She didn't finish her statement, who the owners were.
Jeremy Norton, Brad, Brad Gillis.
Joey Gilkerson.
Joey Gilkerson and Chris Gilkerson.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, and, and our board is aware of that. I mean, we are very, we are very cognizant of, of alcohol being present with youth activities. So it's not something that we take lightly or, or anything like that.
Right.
I'm glad you stated publicly here, because the, I mean, same reaction that you all had when, when I first talked to Richard, I was like, wait a minute, you're talking about Crown Sports Center? But for, so that the public now knows, yes, this is strictly for adult events. Very.
That's fine. If you can, you know, I'm, I guess the only other issue I have is you're basically gonna be in competition with the Civic Center now with dog shows and.
Imagine that, a private enterprise competing with government.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, yeah, I mean, that really, the sport, the youth sports thing really needs to be controlled.
Absolutely. And that, and that, as Mr. Duvall indicated, with the legislation, the way it is currently, um, drafted, that is something that, that we are very adamant that that is included in the legislation, that the board does have the ability to set the regulations. Um, and I can tell you now that our board, as it stands now, we are very committed to that issue.
Okay, thank you.
You have to state your name and position for the record. Nobody's gonna know who you are, you won't get credit for anything.
My name is Christine Travis, and I'm the office coordinator, uh, for the Board of License Commissioners.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are we, yes, Bob, yes, please.
So the, the issue of youth involvement or the alcohol was the bill drafter's concern that drafted this bill. And I guess the question is, are you gonna have a draft of the regulation that you intend to use or present when this goes before the state for approval?
State of Maryland?
I had the, I had the email from the, from him, so I know what it says. And he raised the issue about alcohol and, and youth and how that was gonna work. So the issue, if there is an issue at the state level, it's gonna be how you're addressing it. I understand how you're addressing it. But I guess the question is, are you gonna have a draft of the regulation before you go before the state, um, so that they can see what you're proposing to put into effect to address that issue?
Well, if that's what they ask for, that's, that's what's gonna have to happen. Um, I guess I would say, I haven't seen the email, uh, that you're talking about. Is it from Mr. McCurdy?
I, I believe it is.
So that's who I dealt with. And, and I actually took a stab, uh, at writing, uh, some language that would address the issue we're talking about. And he and I talked it over, as I indicated earlier, and you just can't, it's a kinda issue that is very difficult to address with statutory language. And if you don't, if you don't catch everything, uh, it takes another year to fix it. So he and I decided regulation was the better way to address the problem. Having said all that, I haven't answered the question, what's the regulation gonna look like? But if, if they wanna see that before, uh, well, they're gonna wanna see it in committee, I assume, um, before it even goes to the floor for a vote. So if that's what they want, um, we'll have to provide that if it's gonna prevent passage of the state.
I don't profess to understand how Annapolis works, but my understanding generally is if it gets out of committee, it'll probably pass the floor.
Sure.
The problem's gonna be at the committee level.
Yeah. Well, we'll certainly work with Mr. Adams and.
Absolutely.
And frankly, and frankly, if, if it's a matter of they wanna see that regulation, um, before they pass it out of committee, um, I think it would be appropriate for us to bring that regulation before this body, before we send it up there also.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yeah.
Good, Joe.
How will you handle if there's a youth event and a, an adult event at one time?
Well, that's the tricky part, I'll admit to you, Mr. Holloway. What I can say in that regard is, um, they would be in different parts of the building. And it would be a, boiled down on the street level to an enforcement, um, matter by my, my board's, um, um, enforce, enforcement officers, um, to address that. I think, um, the other thing I would say is if, if there was a significant issue, um, an adverse event of the type we're talking about, licensees know that they could be brought before the board is sanctioned in some fashion, which could range anywhere from a fine to a suspension of a license for a period of time, to in an egregious event, a revocation of the license. I, I can tell this board that in my time with the board, it's been more than 10 years, I think, there's never been a, um, revocation, but there has been a suspension as long as 30 days. And the economic effect of a, a suspension of that length is certainly, gets the point across, um, if it has to be done that way.
In reference to what Mr. Benson stated, and it was a good point, um, in your letter that you're addressing, or your memo that you've addressed with the council, why wouldn't you just take the two lines that says, the board would adopt regulations prior to the law becoming effective, et cetera, concerns we are in exposure to minors, and says, the board regulations will prohibit consumption of alcohol in conjunction with sporting and other events involving minors? Just take those two sentences and add those to section F in the bill. Because honestly, I, I think, I don't know, when the legislators read this, they are going to have some concerns, and there's gonna be people in their ear. So I, what's your take on, you've been working on this for quite a while, what's your take on putting that in there? Could that compromise anything? I mean, you're stating it in your memo.
I haven't thought about it, to be honest with you, just because I knew we were gonna have to do regulations, um, to address that. I will, I will make that a point of discussion with Mr. McCurdy, who's the legislative drafter.
Okay.
If that's an, if that's a, an appropriate, uh, topic to address specifically in the statutory language.
Yeah, I know, you're trying not to get too vague in it, you want it to be very specific, but then again, you don't want it to be overly restrictive either. But if it's, if it warrants enough recognition to be put in the memo, it could also be added to F possibly, those two lines.
So you're just saying those two lines in the memo, I see what, yeah, just have that in.
So my, my response to your question is not, um, directed towards me feeling like our hands would be tied. I'm just not sure that it's the type of thing you would ordinarily put in a statute. But if I can address that, if I can address that without any objection from the legislative drafter, and this council wants me to have it in there, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, we absolutely.
Joe? Is there anywhere in this whole process, maybe John can answer this, or you, Mr. Duvall, that there's public hearings? That there's a public hearing?
Uh, it was on our agenda. Well, did we move it to a public hearing?
No, we did not, Mr. Duvall.
We did move it to a public hearing.
You did?
But they would have to come.
Okay, so, so anywhere between where we're at tonight and when it gets passed by your board or goes to Annapolis, there's a public hearing for the citizens to be able to?
Not currently scheduled, but, um, my understanding, and I'd be, I can be corrected if I'm wrong, when this comes before your body, again, that would be a public.
Surely?
Um, well, normally, if we're gonna send a letter of support, it's done by consensus. But that, you know, a council can certainly have a public hearing if you wish to do that.
I don't know whether the council wants to do it, or they need, I, I just think at some point in time, because this council's gonna bear the brunt of, um, the criticism if we send a letter of support and citizens, nobody's known about it, why did you support this without citizens having input? And as we know, a lot of times we don't get input, sometimes we do.
When do we have to have it up there?
It's going in as late as the end of January, beginning of February. Usually the first hearings for, uh, alcohol beverage hearings are in February with the House bills.
Let me, if I, let me suggest, I'll call Delegate Adams tomorrow and get the timeline that they're working on. If there's time, we could have a public hearing.
You say we, are you talking about?
Board of License Commissioners, had our board in.
In January.
We couldn't do it in December, but we could do it in January. And that would be which Tuesday?
The 3rd Tuesday.
3rd Tuesday. I think the drop did dig. I think the drop date to file is beginning of February, just so you know.
I thought all, all license, all licenses, applications had to have a public hearing. Does that change since I've had multiple license over the years in Worcester and Wacomiko?
I think, they can correct me if I'm wrong, if the, if the state changes the legislation, there will have to be an application by Crown Sports to get the license, and there'll be a public hearing for that.
That's what I'm saying.
But there's two different public hearings that you're talking about. You're talking about notifying the public that there's an, an ask to put this up to the legislature to change the law. That's one public hearing you're talking, that's the one I think you're talking about. There will be a public hearing if, if this passes because Crown will have to apply for it, and they're going to have to go through the regular process.
I was, I guess my question was, between where we're at now and when they get the license, is there a public hearing?
There would be a public hearing, as Mr. Benson indicated.
So the council has to decide whether we want a public hearing on it, or we want to blindly approve it?
And just for the deadlines, February 3rd is the Senate House Bill, or Senate Bill introduction, and then February 7th is the House Bill introduction. That's the final dates. And I, are we going to have a cross file on the Senate, or just going to do?
I assume so. The, the way the bills are coming out of this county, Delegate Adams is what they inform the legislative representative, so everything starts with him.
So surely for the public hearing, would we turn this into a resolution to authorize the letter, the letter of agreement, and just have a public hearing and pass a resolution to that effect?
We typically don't have public hearings. We would, you know, as I said, just consider the letter of support by consensus vote, and then we would send it up. So this would be something new for the council. I, I will defer to Mr. Benson as to whether or not it actually needs a resolution, or we can just simply do the public hearing.
Do a public hearing in consensus, I mean, I.
I may misunderstand, but there are two different timeframes here. One is when the bill gets submitted. The second is when the council sends a letter of support. And they aren't necessarily the same. Right? I mean, the bill could be submitted, the council can send a letter a week later. So the issue is.
Well, it's, it's going to be very hard for us to have a consensus on a bill we haven't seen.
Well, I understand that, but the bills.
That was done last year.
Bills, the bill's roughly been drafted. My understanding is that he'll go back and ask about the one change that you, that Council President mentioned. But I assume that if that's something that can be worked out, that can be done before the next council meeting.
Okay, so we would hold a, we'd put it on the agenda for a public hearing on the 17th with the consensus. I don't know how you're going to, yeah, however you want to put it together, it's, it is a little unusual, but I think Joe's right.
Can I suggest that we have a copy of an updated bill as soon as possible if we're going to have that public hearing, so the public knows what they're speaking on? Yeah.
Last time I asked for a change, it took two weeks, but. I guess, I guess, Mr. Holloway, and I'm, certainly it's, it's the council's prerogative, is the, is the public hearing that'll take place before our board on the application? Does that address your concerns? Because that would be a public hearing. And, and the public, just so you know, maybe you've been to one, so I'm telling you something you already know, but the public can come up, object, they can make public comment, and actually, in our, in our system, it takes place before the board actually votes on whether or not to grant the license. So the public comment would not be heard after the fact, but before.
Talking an alcohol bill that involves youth?
Yeah.
And that's, I'm looking at the rest of this council and thinking, and I'm, sitting here on the face of it, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm okay with it. Okay, depending on what we see. But I know that the trouble we could be in if something went wrong, and that's why I'm asking. That's what my asking's for.
Put it on for the 17th as a public hearing and a consensus, and a vote for consensus.
I'll see if I can turn that around.
And we, we recognize, of course, that a lot of times legislative bills are only as close as you can get, because it will be amended when it goes to Annapolis.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, do we need a consensus to have a public hearing from the council, or are we okay with it?
I'm good with it.
We okay with this? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I'm trying to hold it up. I'm just trying to protect ourselves.
Understood.
Thank you, Greg.
If I don't fit the language in the bill for that meeting on the 17th, it's certainly something that could be added later by amendment.
I think as long as you come as close as you can with the intent, you were there.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next item on the agenda is proposed legislation to add Chapter 98 titled Sanitary District Water and Sewer to the County Code and to amend Chapter 97 titled Urban Service Districts to remove the references to water and sewer utilities. Same routine from my left to right. Thanks.
Punky Lufman, Director of Administration for the County.
I'm Corey, Executive Director of Ronald Services, DPW.
Wilbur County Attorney.
Amanda Pollock with the Center for Watership Protection.
We have Les Knapp with MDE on Zoom.
Les, are you there? There he is.
I am here.
Okay. A little hard to hear you, Les. Hold on. No, I heard him, but it was just really soft. Okay.
How about now?
Okay, all right, we'll go with that.
I'll give, I'll give an introduction.
Thank you.
This is a very large subject. We're talking about probably the biggest public works project by far that the county has ever entered into. It's a project that will go on for years to completion if we're going to bring water and sewer throughout the county. And this is just the first step we have here, the, we'll say the rough draft of some legislation for discussion. What I'd like to do is just run through what's in both of these and then open it up for discussion. Mr. Knapp is very well-versed throughout, throughout the state about these water and sewer sanitary districts. So perhaps use this as an information session tonight, get your thoughts. Okay, so the first thing that you have is what's in Chapter 97 right now. I think many meetings ago, we talked about, let's take the Urban Service Commission out of the water and sewer business, because we're going to have the sanitary district and a sanitary commission. So if you, if you flip through Chapter 97, I've tried to strike out any information or any legislative information or direction about the Urban Service Commission putting water and sewer throughout the county. The objective is to take that job away from the Urban Service Commission and give it to a sanitary commission, which is what would be the new Chapter 98, and is this next piece of legislation. The, the state legislation about sanitary commissions and sanitary districts is about 50 pages long. It's quite an extensive piece of legislation. And I freely admit, I don't know every in and out of it. I've tried to reduce it down to essentially 15 pages, which would be a, hopefully a starting point for legislative action to get the sanitary district up and running with a sanitary commission. So if we flip through the Chapter 98, we're saying the sanitary district is Wacomiko County, and it would not include areas like municipalities that are already served with water and sewer. There can be agreements between the County Sanitary Commission and the various municipalities. And I think that may be, for instance, contemplated between Pittsville and coverage of the Parsonsburg area, which is not an incorporated town, but they need water and sewer in Parsonsburg. So the commission, the idea that, and talking with, you know, everybody at the table here, was there would be the, essentially the executive and the county council, and then there's going to be a commission. The, I had originally written it to have a member of the council and the county executive on a three-member commission, but there's a sentence in that state law that says you can't hold another office and also be on the sanitary commission. So I, I think what you have to have, if you go that way, is a designee from the county executive, a designee from the council, and we have this advisory board of three members, professionals, and you'd have a appointed person from that board. This is certainly open for discussion of how do you want to man this commission? But this commission is, is powerful. You know, they're going to be looking at all the design, the engineering, to determine where in the county and how in the county would the water and sewer be put in. I have left the bonding and the setting of rates with the council. Because I think those are, that's a legislative bill or a resolution, and not have that at the commission level. So the commission would oversee the installation of water and sewer throughout the county, enter into contracts, have professional advice, administrative advice from the Public Works Department. And, you know, Adam Corey is our designated water and sewer person. I think upon reflection that maybe the way to say that is the Public Works Department will be the administrative arm of the sanitary commission, you know, under the, say, the Director of Public Works and designees. That's a way to essentially address it, to bring Adam's position into play. The, you know, there's, the, the work of the commission is audited, you have to give annual reports. The commission would give future projected activities for the next year. If, you know, the, the commission can decide on extending water and sewer out into the county, but also you could have an unincorporated area of the county that could apply to be in. But they'd have to pay for the, you know, professional advice, you might say, to set it up, bring in an unincorporated area. And there's several pages about just the mechanics of what the sanitary commission would do, who would be establishing the charges, which would be the governing body. And, you know, bills go out, bills don't get paid, there are going to be tax liens on the property. That's sort of the mechanics, but that's really way down the road. Initially, I think the sanitary commission is going to be about installing water and sewer in different areas of the county, potentially even building a plant. But I think I'll let the experts, Mr. Knapp and the other people at the table, talk about that. So there's your introduction now. Who wants to go next?
Hank's going to come first.
Thank you. Just to, to add just a little bit to what Mr. Wilbur said. So when we were thinking about the structure, one thing that was important is, as he mentioned, there's about 50 pages of Code of Maryland that covers sanitary commissions, and we, we didn't necessarily want to change that or rewrite it. So at this point, where we are starting with a blank slate, we figured what's best to start with is what's in COMAR. So COMAR says that a typical sanitary commission would have three members and staggered terms. So at this point, we don't have any compelling reason to do anything other than that. And if we would like to do something other than that at some point, it would take state legislation, so you could change COMAR. So there are some just very basic structure things that we took from COMAR to not reinvent the wheel. But one thing we did think was important was to have kind of the checks and balances and accountability of having a technical board that's providing technical expertise and review to the commission. So that's one of the things that we're recommending that is not in COMAR, but that's something open for discussion and, and your opinions. But we thought that, that gave, you know, that, those technical folks may be more interested in serving on a, on a board that is kind of less political, not involved in rate setting, and can really analyze the technical aspects of projects and give a recommendation to the commission that is looking at this more broadly throughout the county. So that's part of why we set it up that way. But again, open to discussion, and certainly, when this whole process started, a year and a half, two years ago, we, we had a meeting with Les Knapp. He was very generous with his time to give us some lessons learned that he's seen from across the state. And one of the things that really resonated with us was accountability and making sure that the commission itself is, is responsible to reporting out to the council and to the county executive to make sure it's transparent what's going on with the, with the functions of the commission.
So another reason that this is being set up this way with the sanitary commission and advisory board, and, you know, we've already started some preliminary outreach to some folks that could be considerations, just to make sure we have our ducks in a row when the time comes to be called upon. It, it lends itself, like, like Amanda just spoke about, to a open dialogue and collaborative process between experts that are going to look into what projects are the highest priority versus the low, and then have that structured communication back out there to appointees or designees or the other representatives of the commission itself, so that, you know, advisory setting goes towards, again, the folks like a designee from the council, the executive, and then what would effectively be a chairperson, if you will, of the, of the actual advisory board. So we have structured it this way to try to avoid some of the pitfalls we've seen in some of our neighboring counties nearby. And that's, we want to make sure that we go forward into the future with something that's robust enough and, you know, a little bit more fireproof, if you will.
Les, comments? I guess, Les, yeah, from a state perspective and maybe other counties, give us an idea of how you see this coming to fruition based on what you, your experience?
Certainly. First, for the record, I'm Les Knapp, Assistant Director for the Water and Science Administration within the Maryland Department of the Environment, or MDE. And I do have to make a brief disclaimer. I'm here tonight to provide technical and policy information. My comments do not represent any formal position of MDE regarding the County Sanitary District proposal. So with that, I, I would agree, I think Mr. Wilbur is correct, that this is a significant, I would say monumental decision for the county to make with long-term ramifications. But given the present and future challenges that you know you're going to be facing with water and sewer provision, I, I think it is very wise of the county to consider this issue at this time. I think broadly, I want to offer, looking across the state, there's five key factors that lead to a successful sanitary district and commission with respect to water and sewer. The first would be make sure that there are clear purposes and goals enumerated for the commission. Number two, make sure that they have the resources and also an ongoing revenue stream to be able to achieve those goals and, and purposes. Number three, they need to have the ability to freely provide technical and policy recommendations outside of the realm of, of politics. Number four, they need to have a professional and public service mindset. And number five, and, and this has already been reiterated actually a couple of times, there needs to be accountability and oversight. And I think, looking at the, the basic draft of what I've seen, you largely address that. I, I will briefly comment, and I was asked to note that there have been some counties and some neighboring counties that have. and some neighboring counties that have had challenges with their sanitary districts and commissions, and Dorchester County in particular is in the middle of reincorporating theirs, and I think one of the biggest challenges they had was, back when their commission was created, it was put into state statute. That meant any changes had to go through the general assembly, and I think as Mr. Wilber alluded to earlier on another topic, that, that can be very challenging to do and really limits local flexibility to address issues as they arise. You obviously are moving through a local bill, and I think that's a much wiser decision. Second, there was a real challenge is that the state law was put in for them with the lack of accountability and performance metrics for the commission, and the, the county council's hands, in many instances, were tied. They did have some limited ability to consider veto or override a decision of the commission, but they, that was very limited. There was also a lack of resources identified there. Some of that was self-inflicted by the commission. They were not, did not, were not efficient in collecting the fees that they should have been collecting to provide the services, and I think this kind of created a death spiral for them where they were not collecting what they should collect, they were, consequently, no longer being effective or professional in the services they were providing, customer service suffered, and people questioned, well, why am I paying what little I'm paying for the service I'm getting? And this limited them from increasing the fees and revenues as they needed to, and that just compounded up on itself until ultimately the county felt like it needed to take action and reconstitute entirely.
So, is that why many counties in, throughout the state of Maryland are sort of doing away with the sanitary commissions?
It, it depends. I think, I would say, they are much more prevalent on the eastern shore, and as Dorchester County is working, they're still having a, a sanitary district, but it is more built into their county structure, and I think your, your direction here, this proposal mirrors that approach, where you have that final oversight and accountability with, properly resting with the county government. I think for larger counties, you know, they're not as needed, so you take Montgomery and French George, is they actually have the WSSC, a regional entity that manages their water and sewer, so having districts there really isn't needed. Baltimore County, Baltimore City have a similar type of, of setup. There's a lot of overlap in, in their provision of services.
Thanks, thank you, Les. Yeah, I mean, when I was going through this, I, I, it looks like there's responsibility, after responsibility, after responsibility. It seems overwhelming, and I don't understand, I mean, three people, this looks like, for what you're, what they're obligated to do, it looks like you need a department of six full-time paid employees. I don't know how three, I don't, are these paid commissioners or are they volunteers? I, I don't, and that's why, I mean, I don't understand, this is all new to me, so I don't know from a larger perspective, from a state perspective, I don't see how three commissioners, and only one being the chair, so you only got two for a quorum, and yet, everything they're being charged with is very, a lot of work, a lot of work, and a lot of, you know, authority to make things happen, deciding financing and things like that on this whole process. So, I don't understand how this is happening unless, to me, it should be a commission of at least five, but then again, there's have to, I, somehow or other, I don't know why the county isn't doing something. I don't understand how this fits in with the government entity. It seems like the government ought to be doing everything the commission's doing.
One quick tidbit, the state law says the commission of a single county is three.
Oh, really? Jeez. And they, and actually, yeah, but how are we going to get the work done?
That's, that's why we're thinking this advisory board as one arm and-
Public Works Department.
But, really, the, the arm is the Public Works Department. So, this, this would be a commission of that, you know, the Public Works Department serves. So, they're not necessarily expected to do all the work. Public Works is going to do the work and present to them. So, you know, they'll be the deciding factor, and they'll make all the decisions, but it's, it's not necessarily different than how, you know, the different departments come and present to you. It would be, Public Works would be preparing things.
With that being said, I think that's a perfect segue into going back to the structure of the three in the three, right? The advisory board is going to effectively sit and hear, hear a sales pitch from me and my staff, once I get some staff, right now, you know, it'll just be me, give them a sales pitch, and then the advisory board's going to decide on whether or not it's appropriate to take that to the commission, all right? And at that point, then the commission, their designees or appointees, would say, okay, this is a step we want to approve, and then it would come back down the chain, and we'd go through the next steps, effectively like we've done recently with the, with the Salisbury Donut Holes, for example, as our most recent resolution of approval. That's, that's, in theory, how this would work, and again, yes, President Cannon, there's a significant amount of a heavy lift in there, where a truly positions would need to be in DPW for that eventually. There's some stuff we can pick away at, you know, now, pie in the sky, without having a robust, you know, additional arm of, of DPW. We've got staff and expertise on staff now that can handle it, but eventually, as you get down the pathway 15, 20 years from now, then you're starting to look at really, truly having a, a larger, you know, a, a larger need for staffing. But, again, the advisory board, the volunteers, they're coming to hear the sales pitch, moving it up to the commission, they're not necessarily the ones making the lift, it'll be our staff.
It's like, the state says we have to have a commission, so we're going to have a commission. I mean, and, but you guys are going to do the work, and I, I can't understand how the commission of three people are going to tell your entire department that they don't like what you've done and redo it.
I, I mean, again, it's, it, the good part is, if you get the advisory board, and there is language in here that we want to have those people having a certain, oh, there it is up there, knowledge or expertise in engineering and architecture, planning, finance, accounting, building, and construction of water sewer systems, on that advisory board, and then, of course, that's kind of, again, weeding out the issues preliminarily before they come to the commission, so we would hope to present a product to the commission that they would feel comfortable with giving a yea or nay, or a request for modification, and just a real nice, open dialogue.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trying to stay away.
Real nice, open dialogue, as we move forward toward our projects. So, you know, again, I think, you know, Mr. Knapp's comments are, are very timely on the, on the end of this, where we are, again, with this type of structure, I think that it lends itself to an, an open process, you know, some prevention of known pitfalls that we've seen other places, and, you know, having, go ahead.
I do think, in a way, that, that, obviously, totally different subject matter, but our planning and zoning staff does this for the planning and zoning commission. They put in, and, you know, Councilman Holloway, who was, they, they put in a lot of work and, and sort of the things that he has to read as a member of that commission, so I think it'd be similar, Public Works would have to do a lot of work-
That's, that's good.
For, for the boards.
Good comparison.
I guess, my, my main concern out of all this is just to make sure that, especially if we're only having three members of this, that, you know, that they're at least qualified individuals. I really like having the technical board or whatever as part of that, but do we need to have further qualifications, or are there other, you know, groups across the state that actually have something with requiring like a certified engineer or something like that? I, I guess I'm a bit worried that we might have, you know, a county council or a county executive says, hey, I got a cousin Steve, and he's really great with Legos, but he's never worked on any projects, but I'd really like to have Steve on this board, you know, like, I want to get away from those kind of situations and actually have this be a really certified, thoughtful individuals on this, and so, I don't know how we make that happen, or maybe we can think about the qualifications part, but this is a very serious organization, I think, and, and I think, as it said, this is the biggest public, you know, this is the biggest work that we've ever done in the county. We need to make sure that we've got the right people in there.
Absolutely. Totally agree, and I appreciate those comments, Councilman Aysden.
Joe, okay, go ahead, Joe.
Oh. Rough estimate, from today till the first tarlet gets flushed, how long?
Well, on which projects? The Salisbury Donut Holes project's a little bit easier to say, but we do have the Parsonsburg, Pittsville, PERs coming in, into place.
As preliminary engineering-
Pittsville has-
Yes, sorry.
Their, their expansion has gone through or going to go through, and they're, they're signing on to-
Pittsville's applying for funding for their wastewater expansion, so they're at that same point of preliminary engineering report and about to apply for funding, so the Parsonsburg extension is contingent upon their plant getting upgraded. So, that will not, probably not be our first shovels in the ground.
Okay.
We'll be applying for state funding for the areas around Salisbury, the couple neighborhoods that we had looked at a month or so ago. Those could potentially be our first projects. The applications that are due to the state in January for funding, if we get funded, you're required to start construction by December of the following year. So, funding applied for January 2025, the state expects construction to start by December of 2026.
For, for our first.
So, had you reached any kind of agreement with Salisbury about the annexation, annexation issues that's been, you know, talked about?
Yeah, well, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, the Salisbury's resolution for the out-of-town service areas, where it is a, a health issue as designated by the public health officer, does not require annexation, and it states in that policy that Salisbury would not approach those areas for annexation unless they're ready to provide all city services, such as sidewalks, streetlights, trash pickup, that type of thing.
Did, they don't have to sign a pre-annexation agreement?
They do not, no, not under that resolution.
That was in their resolution.
An out-of-town service agreement would be needed, but in the public health issues from the, from the public health officer, they wouldn't need to be pre-annexed.
I have a concern also, dealing with the wastewater treatment plant in the city of Salisbury, I'm going to piggyback on Josh's, we need to have someone that is an ex, not necessarily an expert, but is familiar with water and sewer issues, because we had people working at the wastewater treatment plant, and when the, the original, the first water treatment plant, the people that worked there didn't understand anything, they worked there for years, so we need to make sure that those people, there's staffing, that you're staffing, will really understand these processes.
Certainly, and, and that concept of us having staff under the sanitary district that are pulling levers to let gallons flow through pipe, that's way, way, way down the road. I certainly hear you loud and clear, where we are here, specifically with the advisory board and the commission, when, especially with the advisory board, excuse me, I'll be back up, is having people that have that expertise in, you know, architecture, funding, engineering, the grand scheme of how you make plans. Then, we reach out to engineers that, that are third-party vendors, like we do currently with our other preliminary engineering reports or PERs, like we are working right now with EA, EA Science and Engineering, on both the PER for Parsonsburg and Pittsville, well, excuse me, I'm sorry, Parsonsburg, and then, of course, city of Salisbury as well. So, we have that expertise coming in that would the advisory board be utilizing with, with our staff to come to the commission with as a yea or nay. So, yes, we certainly take the need for having the right qualifications for these people as, that is a paramount concern of ours moving forward, for sure.
I, I did want to get in, just, and I wish we, so when Councilman Holloway asked, I do remember the town manager, Pittso, and Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe he said, if everything goes well with their preliminary engineering report, they believe that their upgrade would be five to seven years away.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So, we, I would assume, aren't going to run pipes before they would, you know, upgrade their plant and have capacity, so that's how long that is.
Les has his hand up, President Cannon.
Yes, Les, thank you. Just, just butt him wherever you want, Les, please. Go ahead.
We'll, we'll do, and congratulations and condolences, by the way, on your extension as one more year as president.
Thank you, Les.
I, I did want to note, in respect specifically to your concern over the number of members, state law does set that, but different counties can go in and have exceptions. For example, Dorchester County, and again, their, their entire commission was in state law, which I would not advise, but they, they were, they had six members on their commission, so you could go to your legislators and ask, we'd like a five-member commission in Wycomico County, and that could go through, get passed, and then you could do five members in, in your county. So, you do have some flexibility on some things. I, I wouldn't advise wholesale changing state law, but if you had a specific couple of tweaks you wanted to make for the unique circumstances of Wycomico County, you could absolutely do that.
Thanks, Les, thank you.
What's your take on that? Anybody? Should we go to five, should we go to three? I'm, I'm not familiar with, you know, whether it's create some more-
Part of why we considered just sticking with three is, is because it is kind of the basic state law, and we, we didn't have any compelling reason to say, let's go to five or six, so I feel like you could start down this path, and if you're finding that it's not working for you, you could always petition your state legislators and get it changed, but I couldn't come before you and say it absolutely has to be five, and ask you to go through that very long process without having a good justification, and we just couldn't come up with one.
Yeah, I, I'm just having trouble figuring out how much work they're going to have to do based on what Department of Public Works is going to be doing, how it gets split up.
I, I don't think that would be a controversial bill, and Les could maybe speak to that. I, I, I don't think it would be a heavy lift to get the bill through, but Les has more experience on that than I do.
I think that would be considered a local bill and subject to local courtesy, and, and yes, I'm not sure who, if the county supported that, who, who would come out in opposition to that.
We're looking at two legislative bills, one is to amend 97, and then the legislative bill is to add 98, section 98.
Yes, sir.
Where would we go from here, Miss Holloway? Would we just, I guess, the-
I do have one quick question.
Yeah, yeah, please.
For clarification, did you say that the sanitary commission would consist of a designee from the executive, a designee from the county council, and then?
And then the chair of the advisory board.
Okay, because I don't think the legislation is currently written that way.
Right. It isn't, but they, I think they acknowledge that problem.
We can change it. We, we have changed it internally.
Okay, okay.
We'll give you an updated copy of that.
So, I think then, to answer your question, I think the, you know, you guys maybe should take a consensus vote as to whether or not you want to stick with the three members or if you want to increase it, and if you want to increase it, then I would suggest that you go through that process before it comes back for introduction.
One question I have is, how, I, I understand, I appreciate the fact that you're doing one executive, one council, and then the third. Why wouldn't we just do the two by executive authorized by the council?
I think that's, that's a formula that would work.
I think, what, what this came from is our original concept of this would be an actual member of the council would be on that board, the executive would be on that board, and then the chair, and then when Mr. Wilber brought to our attention that an elected official couldn't be on it, and then we were like, well, maybe it would be their designee, but I don't, I don't have an issue with what you just proposed.
What does the council feel about that? I feel as if in these type of circumstances, the administration has a better vetting process, would have a better vetting process to evaluate it, and the council would, would approve that.
Like, appoint and confirm.
Yeah, but that's something that everyone here would have to decide on.
I'm generally okay with that. I, I'm still a little bit concerned that we might not, I want to make sure that we have qualified people in there, and I guess we don't really spell that out, that they have to have a particular degree or something like this, but I'm okay with that. I think that's the general process, and that makes sense, but I am still worried that-
Okay with that? All right?
Yeah.
Okay? Go with that, and we appreciate the-
Oh, absolutely.
The effort on that, but-
President?
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt, I wanted to wait till everybody, is the, the council's done, I got-
I understand, thanks. Go ahead.
I, I spoke to Mr. Wilber briefly yesterday, and I'm not asking for answers, but I had questions that I think council needs to at least consider, and the first has to do with the chapter 97, where this urban services district is being changed, and I confess, I don't understand this, but in section 97 dash three, it talks about districts and the water, the words water supply and sewer disposal being removed, but that would imply that there are going to connect, and there's going to continue to be an urban services commission for storm drainage and surface water drainage, curbing, guttering, street lighting, police protection, fire protection, garbage and trash protection, collection and disposal, and my question is, is there a, does the county currently have an urban services district for anything other than water and sewer? Because I'm not, if it doesn't, I don't know why we're keeping an urban services district.
The county, the county has it, it's the city.
We do for street lighting, we do a lot of street lighting.
Street lighting?
Yeah, but you don't have-
I think street lighting's the only one I've seen.
That's right, it's, it's the city that has the urban service district.
So, that may be the answer. Secondly, I know that there are, I don't know how many- Secondly, I know that there are, I don't know how many urban service districts, water and sewer areas there are. And the question I had from Mr. Wilber is, how does the existing, an existing water and sewer urban service district, the one that's all around Woodland Road, it's, it's gonna be the urban service district today, tomorrow it's gonna be the sanitary district? How does it get transferred? Does that need to be in the bill? Because it's not currently in the bill. I just don't know the answer to that. But, you know, on Monday, they're gonna get a bill from the urban services district, and on Tuesday, they're gonna get a bill somehow from the sanitary district. And I don't understand how that works. And it seems to me there needs to be some explanation of how that works.
I think the, say, the Woodland Road area, any bill they would receive is from the city.
It's on behalf of the urban services district. It's not on behalf of the sanitary district.
We'll check on that.
I just...
I think the city is controlling that.
Yeah, I think they do.
But I assume the city's agreement is with the urban services district.
We'll find out.
And it would need to be amended to be with the same. There's a process, and I'm just saying, we need to figure out what that process is.
Sure.
It's going from A to B, and I don't know how that's supposed to work. And the question I asked Mr. Wilber, and I don't know the answer to this either, but there's a section in the urban services agreement that talks about bonds. And the question is, does there, has the urban services district ever issued bonds? Mr. Wilber says he thinks all the bonds are from the county, not from the urban services district. My only question is, if there's a bond that was issued that related to the Woodland Road Urban Services District, and that now suddenly is no longer in existence and is a sanitary district, does that somehow have to be corrected or changed or modified to, to make the bond work? I'm not saying that's a problem. I just don't know.
Right. I checked with Pam Olin this morning, and she said all the bonds are Wycomico County bonds. There are, the urban service commission has not issued any bonds, which makes sense. Full faith and credit of the county is through the county.
The last thing on that bill is in 97-21, I guess, 2128 filing of budget. And it says the commission's, it's, what it did say was the commission each year should file a budget with the county, and that's been stricken. But if there's still gonna be an urban services district, aren't you still gonna have a budget of some kind? So doesn't that speed to be, to stay in there?
I'm not aware that the county urban service commission or urban service district has any budget.
Yeah.
It's all been about approving street lighting and some subdivisions.
We do have an escrow account, though, for that Village Down River account.
Okay. Let's check that.
On the, the chapter 98, Ms. Pollak was kind enough to meet with me and talk to me about this process. And since our meeting, obviously, the, the, the original intent, as I understood it, was, well, let me back up. My understanding is that it, that there has been somewhat of a trend for counties to do away with or get away from sanitary districts. Worcester County had a sanitary district. Worcester County no longer has a sanitary district. I'm unclear as to why they did it, but my impression is that they just found it to be cumbersome and problematic, and they took it back into the county government. So I'm trying to figure out why, if you can do that in Worcester County, maybe that process would be better in Wycomico. Why have a Worcester, why have a sanitary district? Why not just run it through the public works department? And I'm not saying that's feasible. I just don't know the answer. I know that they've discussed Dorchester County. I know they've had a problem in Dorchester County with their sanitary district. In talking to Ms. Pollak, my understanding was that one of the concerns that they had that in certain counties, the sanitary district kind of became a power center in and of itself, and they were unelected. And the, that was part of the reason that you were gonna have one member from the county council, the, one member, the county executive, because that way you had elected persons on the commission. If you can't do that, you're back to the problem of having an unelected board who starts to gather power. And you don't, the, the way this was drafted kind of doesn't work now. And I'm not saying it's bad, it's just that part of the concept, as I understood, drafting it in the way they did was to try to eliminate or minimize this separate power structure of unelected people who are making decisions. Because once they're in, they're in for six years, I think, and you can't do anything about it effectively. So I, I think, you know, that's something that needs to be considered as to whether or not there's a process that you could do that stays within the Department of Public Works, and you don't do a sanitary district. But I, I'm not advocating that, I'm just asking the question.
So are you, so are we headed down on, what's that word, antiquated path here?
Antiquated.
Antiquated, yeah, okay. Antiquated path here that possibly?
But isn't there, isn't there an issue with funding, though? In order to get state funding, doesn't have to come through a particular, like these kinds of, I don't know if, I mean, maybe that's a question Les or Amanda or Ms.?
Yeah, maybe. I mean, that was my concern why I asked before, is that you're gonna have a bunch of volunteers who are gonna be telling the Department of Public Works that they approve or don't approve of your work, and you are the professionals. But Les, that could be a question for you. I mean, is this an antiquated system? Or, I just was under the impression that this was part of what was required in order to get from A to Z.
So it, it's not required. I wouldn't call it antiquated, but it's, it's not the only path you could take. Obviously, I cited Baltimore County, Baltimore City, and Prince George's Montgomery. They have a more regional entity. I'm, I'm not sure that would work here. You're, you're looking for something to serve the residents and businesses of Wycomico County. But you could do something within your Department of Public Works. I, I would note that this, just to be clear, my understanding here, this advisory board is, just makes recommendations. They don't make final decisions. That rests with the county government or the commission itself, which would be represented through the designees of the county government, whether it's the county executive or the county council. So these three members that are volunteers and serve six-year staggered terms, all they're doing is making recommendations and nothing more. They're, and, and they're an advisory board, as is in their name. So I, I think that's, that's one important caveat. I do go back, and if you do go with the district format, just making sure that the county as, as a council and the executive branch have some ability to override or veto actions taken by the commission. And that's something different counties that have these do have. And again, you may wanna make a tweak or an amendment to the state law with that, but to the extent you're able to within your charter form of government do that just through your, your bill, I, I certainly would advise that. Accountability and oversight is critical, and that's something that, again, in Dorchester County, because it was put in state law, and the way it was put in state law was lacking.
I guess the, is there a timeframe that the county has to do the sanitary district or whatever it is? I mean, does that have to be done in two months, six months, a year? I mean, when?
I think it needs to be, if you're gonna have a sanitary commission, which it looks to me like state law requires a sanitary commission if you have a sanitary district. Les, do you have any input on that?
That's what I thought.
Can you have a sanitary district and not have a sanitary commission?
I believe you're correct that if you do one, you have to do the other. You, you can modify and amend what, what the specific authorities and powers are. Again, in other counties that still use these have, have made some tweaks, if, if you look through state law. There are a couple of specific provisions that in, in county X, for example, you can have different members, or, you know, there can be some specific provisions. You could potentially incorporate all of this into your Department of Public Works as well. I think having an advisory board in any capacity is, is a, a smart choice to try to get that feedback outside of the government setting. But I do think you do have to have, if you have a, a district and you formally have that district set up, you do need to have a commission as kind of the oversight body of that district.
Thank you.
But realistically, I mean, does the sanitary district have to be established before you do the, what you're referring to as the donut holes in Salisbury?
No, not for this, not for that first project that we just came to you for, that resolution. No, not for that project, yes, sir.
So realistically, what's the timeframe that this needs to be done?
You have time, in my opinion. I, I think, in my opinion, you wouldn't need a commission until you're starting to set rates. You know, right now, you've allocated budget to the public works department to advance projects so they can be performed by the public works department. So until there's rate setting involved, that's when I would see you, you're really needing a commission. So you, you have some time.
That's years from now.
That's a year plus, over a year for sure. Yeah. You have time to consider your options.
Yeah.
And we know how fast a year can go by, don't we?
Certainly can.
So our time restraints aren't to try to get it into, to the state of Maryland by February this year?
Oh, no. No, no, no.
Okay. All right. So I'm, I'm assuming then that we'll probably have another work session on this as opposed to trying to move it, move it forward through legislation.
This is just the first step of many, I think.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'd like to know how many counties or towns have sanitary districts?
We can find that out.
Yeah.
I don't know that off the top of my head.
I know you, I know you would. Because I know a water and sewer in Salisbury is run by Public Works.
That's right.
They don't have a sanitary district or commission or nothing.
No, because it's a municipality.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Brittany Fraser in here, just in case we really find ourselves in a bind that would give the council the authority by maybe a supermajority to disband the commission without creating a, a total nightmare? Is that actually not gonna make sense? Would that send us down a really bad path?
Talk about...
I would hold off on that approach.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, you know, it was, it was said that the commission made a whole lot of, was creating a whole lot of problems at one point in time. I don't know if there's some type of fail-safe measure we need to put in place as a county.
Gotcha. Understood.
I think we should look at that.
Yeah.
I, I was, I was thinking if we could set like a, like a six-year relook at it, like, kinda like how we did the Horizons. Okay, let's look at this in six years and see if this is gonna work out.
The only thing is that we have to have it, right? We have to have it in order to have a sanitary district. We have to have it. That's why I don't know.
Or effectively, you gotta kinda just flip that chalkboard over and go to the blank side and start over again with simply the DPW. But again, I think I'll just, just echo some of the comments that have been made prior in by Mr. Knapp. The advisory board lends itself to giving good counsel on the decisions of projects that are long view. You know, they're not stuff you're looking to do in the next six months to a year. They're, they're stuff you need to start planning now for 20 years from now. You know? So it's, you know, personally, before I came to the county, you know, I was working literally hand-in-hand on almost a weekly basis with Dorchester County as they went through their transition, if you will, towards where they stand today.
Right.
Learned quite a lot from that. And, you know, I think, again, Amanda said it best, there's no rush here. I think we all can, there's been a good conversation tonight. We can certainly start moving forward as we have more thoughts come to our heads collectively, and then make a decision that's gonna be best for the county and the citizens.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is proposed legislation to require special legal counsel for the Ethics Commission. This is something where there was concern expressed that with Mr. Wilber's situation, he's, he's, we all recognize and appreciate the fact he's extremely ethical person, but it seemed as if there's a perception of undue influence if the, if there's an issue that comes before the Ethics Commission in reference to any, the administration or any department heads or any employees where the Ethics Commission is looking for an objective perspective on that. And if they're looking for legal opinion and Mr. Wilber's giving that legal opinion, it could be the perception that maybe there is a conflict in that matter. A simple solution to that, which is what we have here proposed, is just simply that the Ethics Commission hires outside legal counsel. It's not gonna create an additional expense because either we're gonna pay Mr. Wilber or we're gonna pay outside legal counsel. But it's just to eliminate that perception that there might be a conflict, because there are cases where Mr., oh geez, I forgot to thank Les Knapp.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Anyway, there might be a situation where Mr. Wilber could find himself in, you know, in unfortunate set of circumstances where the public generally say, this just isn't, I, we don't think we like it. I don't think it's any skin off your back, because the only thing it's gonna do is give you less work to do.
Yeah. Can I, can I ask? Paul, can I ask you a question about, about that? I know you're not the guy for it. I mean, it's, it's, it's Andrew, right? Andrew does the ethics?
Oh, actually, we've, he's done some. Erica's done some.
I've done some. I think, I, I don't really have a problem with this at all. I just, I just think, I don't wanna bind you up in case you need to work with county employees that have an ethics problem with another county employee. And you probably should be involved in most of that, but if it's something involving, I imagine a council member or county executive just saying, or, or a department head, I, I mean, I think there should be something in there stating that we need to have special legal counsel just so that it keeps you from having to be in the mix.
The Ethics Commission has their own set of rules that have been in place for years. Okay? And that gives the Ethics Commission the ability to seek outside counsel whenever they wish.
So they already have this?
Yeah. It's, it's right in their rules of procedure.
Okay.
Not in the charter, or it's not in the code?
No, it's not in the code. It's, it's in there...
So I don't know how it gets paid if it's not in the code.
Well, if they seek outside counsel, then it'd have to go through the process of appointing outside counsel. Hopefully, that would not be difficult.
This would be kinda like Mr. Benson being the attorney for the Ethics Commission and a council member having an ethics issue.
Yeah.
So...
Right. It would be uncomfortable for Mr. Benson.
Yeah. Yeah. Could, uh, could, could we make it so that, that it's in the code? Just, it just has an option that they can seek outside counsel? Like, not that it's mandatory, that obviously, I think the, I think the county attorney should be, me personally, I think the county attorney should be involved in most ethics cases, but if they need outside counsel for a special case?
Sure. I mean, it's, it's in their rules right now. If you wanna put it in the code...
He's, we're just, he just brought up the, the thing that, how does it get paid?
Well, he'd have to be, he or she would have to be appointed.
Right.
Properly.
Okay.
Okay? And, and there's, there's another nuance here, and that is, the work of the Ethics Commission, I would say overwhelmingly, is to give advisory opinions. Okay? Seldom do they have to deal with a complaint, which is good, and good for the county. So that, that's, I don't know if that makes any difference in how you wanna look at things, but that's what I've seen over the years, both with the city and with the county, that advisory opinions are where the ethics committees tend to do their work.
I sent an email out to all the county council members. If you look at county councils, counties that have executive forms of government, there seems to be an effort to separate the council for the Ethics Commission from the county attorney for the same reason. I mean, if you look at Cecil County, if you look at Hartford County, if you look at Anna Rundle and Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and it gets confusing because apparently they have ethics staff. So, I mean, they, they have paid staff, and they have a paid separate attorney, so it's confusing. But if you look at Cecil County, Hartford County... But if you look at Cecil County, Hartford County, there are provisions where the county attorney doesn't do it. There's a provision in one of them that if there's a, if there's a complaint against the county executive, that the county council attorney does it. I don't...
You don't want to get...
I'm not, I'm not looking for that work. I'm just saying, that's what they do. So there seems to be an effort to separate out, when you have a county executive, there is an inherent issue, and it seems that most counties do that. And the only point I would make, and I don't want to raise a specific name, but there was a recent complaint, I think, involving the, an executive department person. And I guess the question is, did the county, did the Ethics Commission hire separate counsel when that occurred?
The current Ethics Commission has not taken the option of hiring outside counsel.
So there was a recent situation where they could have done it, they didn't do it.
Yeah. The other, the other thing, and is, somebody on the council mentioned it to me, I don't know who, that if we do this, we all should put it in there that it shouldn't be an attorney from the county, from Wycomico County. It should be somebody from Worcester, Dorchester, Somerset, a practicing attorney from outside the county if we did that.
I, I'm not advocating doing that. I did point out that Dorchester County has that provision, but I don't know who you get to do that. But they seem to be unique in that.
Are we okay with moving forward with this?
I mean, I'm, like I said, I'm fine with it. I just, I just don't know if it's a good idea to remove the county attorney from the whole thing. Because that's, that's what I'm reading, right? I mean, it's the whole thing?
No, I think that's a little bit wrong. If, if it's a county employee that's employed under the county executive's office, and there's an ethics complaint, and the Ethics Committee has their own attorney, the county attorney, Mr. Wilber now, or Mr. Illuminati, would probably represent the county employee at that ethics hearing, right?
Or advise.
Advise.
Not necessarily.
So you want to defend?
Not necessarily.
And where would, where would this county employee get their defense at? Have to hire somebody?
Good.
The idea is, if we could move it forward, we have a consensus to move it forward, and then any fine tuning we can do during the legislative process, whether or not it's employee from Wycomico County or outside of Wycomico County, we can address that also. But I don't really, I really don't have a problem with it being with an attorney in Wycomico County.
Pardon me?
I don't have a, I don't have a problem with it being with an attorney in Wycomico County.
And the other thing, the other issue is, who pays?
Well, they would.
Who's they?
Well, nothing really changes there, Joe. It's just whether it's...
Right now, the county executive's paying. Correct. Does that come out of the county executive's budget?
Out of the county's budget.
County budget, yeah. Okay.
So we'll move forward with it?
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Can I, can I just have one comment? So the next step would actually be to send it to the State Ethics Commission. I did speak to them, and they said that they consider it administrative change. They can put it on their January agenda if you guys agree tonight to move it forward. So I'll send it to them, and then we'll have to wait to hear back from them before we can come back for introduction.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. O'Leary. Great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilber.
Yep.
Entertained motion to adjourn to go into closed session. So move second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
[coughs]